Six o'clock regular city council meeting. City Attorney, any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Council convened in closed session to discuss the two items listed on the agenda. Council was provided information and gave direction of staff, and there's no reportable action.
Call the meeting in order. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Silent prayer and flag salute. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Tina Hubert, can you please replay statement read?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, December 22 at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 23 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item is F. Council, anything approvable, addition or deletion? See, nothing. Move to the next agenda item, G. Presentation, number one, subject, introduction of new employee Genesis Allegria, Community Engagement Analyst.
Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. I am here this evening to introduce our new Community Engagement Analyst, Genesis Allegria. Did I say that right? Getting close. Genesis joins us from the Parks and Recreation Department. And so she was a part-time employee working in Parks and Recreation overseeing or working with Jackie Garcia in special events. And so Genesis has worked for the past year and a half as a project specialist, project management specialist. She is a local. She lives here in Galt. She's a graduate of Galt High School. She has a degree in marketing from Sac State University, and we are elated to have her on board. She started on December 4th and has really hit the ground running. She's already issued the most recent Connect with Galt newsletter that went out, and so she drafted that. She's been doing all of her social media postings. She's also working with Jackie in special events to coordinate some of the social media outreach on the special event side and with the Galt market. And so just wanted to give you all a chance to meet her and please welcome me and join me in welcoming her for her new position here in the city. Would you like to make a few comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful for this opportunity, and I'm excited to be able to contribute to my community, so thank you.
Thank you, Genesis. Welcome and congratulations. Thank you. Next subject, presentation, Old Town Business Walk Report, Ms. Mendez.
So I will keep this exciting ball rolling here with the Old Town Galt Business Walk recap. So really wanted to come back to council and just give a quick update on an event that we held back in October. Oh, thank you, Craig. In conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and SMUD actually joined us on this adventure. And so this really started as an inquiry from the chamber in regards to conducting a business walk in the Old Town area. Traditionally, business walks that I've been on have been really in industrial areas, more focused on large employers and sales tax generators. And so this was a little bit different, and it really stemmed from the need for the chamber to engage with some of the Old Town businesses. They started the businesses of Old Town Group not too long ago, and so that was sort of the starting point for this conversation. And we thought, you know, what a better way to really engage our Old Town businesses on, for a couple of different reasons. One of them would be related to the C Street project. I know that's on the agenda later this evening, and so we were hoping to engage the businesses along C Street that were going to be impacted as part of this project. And so really, you know, we thought this was a great time for us to conduct this and kind of get out in the community and meet with some of these businesses to talk to them about the boot, and then also talk to them about the C Street project and, you know, see if there was anything on the city front or, you know, from SMUD that we could help them with. And so just to give you some background in terms of what a business walk is, it is a day dedicated to learning more about local businesses through face-to-face interviews. Local leaders and volunteers visit businesses with the hopes of creating a connection and gathering knowledge needed to strengthen relationships with the small business community. As I mentioned, really building relationships is key, I think, with some of the small businesses here in town. And so this was the background and the reason, you know, we decided to do this. And we engaged the chamber. We also engaged SMUD and city staff joined us. We also had Chamber Board of Directors included as part of this. I know some of the council members were able to come along, and it ended up being a great day. The weather was gorgeous, so we had lots of success out there. The goal of a business walk is really to understand issues facing the business community. In this case, it was the Old Town businesses. We were really hoping to build working relationships between decision-makers and local businesses. We wanted to celebrate and promote our local businesses and provide local businesses with educational resources. SMUD came along with us. There was lots of questions on resource programs and incentives that SMUD had available, some energy efficiency improvements that a lot of the building owners wanted to make. And so having them along was really helpful. Obviously, the chamber and me on the economic development front really helped with connecting them with educational resources, but it also gave a chance for a lot of our community members, our board members from the chamber and some of the council members to hear firsthand what some of the concerns were out in the business community, and I think that was really important. The business walk was on October 17th. On a Tuesday, we got together and we met here in the council chambers. I gave a brief sort of presentation and overview and identified the businesses that we were going to be visiting, the territory we were kind of walking. Everybody got a walking assignment and a survey. And so one of the things we did was, you know, tried to gather some baseline data from the businesses in terms of how the business, their businesses are operating, how the environment is, how the climate is for some of the businesses out there, also educate them and talk to them about the C Street project. And so we had a very brief survey that we sort of walked through with each of the businesses. The area that we covered extended a little bit beyond Old Town, and that was really because we did want to focus on the businesses that were going to be impacted as part of the C Street project. So we took it a little bit farther down C Street to, I think Printing Kings was the last business that we visited. And then we went along Fourth Street, up C, and then we also stopped by a lot of the businesses on Lincoln. Some of the questions that we asked, I'll run through these briefly, and we can kind of talk about what the end result really was from some of the opinions of some of the business owners. We asked them to rate Old Town Galt as a place to do business, and the majority of folks, I think, felt like Old Town was a good place to do business. We had excellent, good, neutral, needs improvement, and poor. And like I said, during these conversations, we were able to gather a lot more input as it relates to some of these questions and responses. Describe the outlook on your business climate. Most of the businesses were optimistic and very optimistic, which was encouraging. What are the challenges of operating a business in Old Town Galt? You know, what we heard over and over again was homelessness. That is a very big concern for some of the businesses in the Old Town area. That came from most of the folks who took survey information. And just our recap at the end of the day was at Brewster's, and that was a common theme that we did hear in relation to the homeless dumping garbage and leaving trash in the area, also sleeping in the, their building nooks and, you know, kind of some of the areas. In the mornings, they would find them, and so that was a concern. Parking was also a big concern for a lot of the businesses. Safety concerns with the vandalism was brought up, and those were really kind of the bigger ones. Low traffic was mentioned quite a few times, and that was really related to pedestrian traffic more so than vehicular traffic. We asked about the special events, wanting to, you know, kind of find out if they were benefiting the businesses. And obviously, I think the businesses along Fourth Street and towards Fourth and C really do benefit from the special events, and that was something that was relayed to us. We did hear quite a bit about Lincoln Way being left out, and that's something I think that we are familiar with, and I know Jackie has heard that in the past as well. And so Kat and I talked about the Chamber Communications Director, about maybe ways that we can work with some of those businesses. There's a lot of vacancy along Lincoln Way, and so maybe focusing some of our efforts on business education, marketing, and advertising with some of those businesses along Lincoln. We asked about the C Street Enhancement Project. You know, we did a lot of outreach during the design phase for C Street, and so wanting to see sort of who had talked to either representatives from the city or city council or the design team or the PR firm. And so surprisingly, most of the folks had not heard about the project. And so one of the key things that we really tried to hone in on was gathering input from, for contact purposes. So contact information so that we could connect back with them as we go through the C Street marketing and outreach piece. Are you looking to expand your business? Not many folks were looking to expand, but we did have some that were looking to hire, and I think that gives us an opportunity to kind of go back and revisit things that we can do to kind of help them on that front. The, sorry, I don't have my glasses. I can't see anything right now. What can the City of Galt and the Galt Chamber of Commerce do to help your business be more successful? You know, really, at the end of the day, we're trying to figure out what we can do to help these businesses grow, what concerns they have. A lot of these small businesses don't know who to call when they have an issue with, you know, if it's an electricity issue with SMUD, you know, we're trying to really elaborate with them and work with them so that they understand that we're a resource. And so call the chamber, call the city. We can put you in contact with whoever it might be that can assist you. Some of the responses we heard was, you know, we asked them, and we actually had provided these responses in terms of providing more network opportunities, providing more small business education, be a better advocate for small businesses, provide incentive programs. And so we did get a variety of responses on that, but obviously, you see down here this other component. People were wanting to provide a lot of feedback on what we could do to help them. And so in this category, you know, we kind of heard more of the same in terms of business education and resources with hiring, with marketing, with advertising, hosting events along Lincoln Way. The parking issue, like I said, was brought up quite a few times in our conversations and also provided as part of the surveys. Homelessness incentives was brought up quite a few of the businesses. We probably had a handful of them that said they'd really like to do some facade improvements. And so if the city were able to provide some type of grant match, that would be really helpful. Better outreach, more united communications from the city and the chamber, and then, you know, advertising again to bring more pedestrian traffic to the area. We did leave an open-ended question at the end in regards to additional comments or suggestions that the city or chamber could do to assist the businesses. Again, safety came up along with homelessness. Parking fees was a big one, and we heard this kind of across the board, but the signage fee was brought up a few times, and I've already, you know, touched with, faced with Craig to kind of talk about maybe what we can do to take a peek at what's going on there, where that fee is, if it's a monument fee or if it's traditional signage fees for some of these businesses in strip centers that have master sign programs. We are going to try to identify where that complaint is coming from and drill down a little bit further there. On Lincoln Way, some of the complaints that we had heard during our conversations and during the survey that we, feedback we received were the trees having aphids, and we've heard that along Lincoln Way with a lot of the trees. I think a few of them have already been torn out as a result. Needing better lighting and illegal dumping, going back to the homeless, I think, concern. Sports activities was brought up by a few of the restaurants. You know, when we do and host tournaments, a lot of those restaurants fill up on the weekends. And so what can we do to bring additional sporting tournaments into the community that really help on the weekends with some of the restaurant activity and traffic? And then traffic, again, coming down to needing more speed limit signs was brought up, and then the intersection at Fourth and C, I think we've heard that from quite a few folks in the past, so it wasn't anything super surprising, I think. Next steps, I will be working with the Chamber of Commerce and determining really what issues that we have been identified that we can address in the upcoming year. Some of these items that were brought up are part of our strategic plan, so incentive programs for some of the smaller businesses. Obviously, we have the ad hoc committee that's been put together for the quality of life that touches on that homeless issue. And so I think there are a few things here that we can check off of our list as we move through the new year. Communicating with the other city departments regarding some of the issues we found. Obviously, we talked about homeless and the Lincoln Way, some of the fees, and so working with the other departments on things that we can address there. And then communicating back to the survey respondents and the businesses just to ensure that they know that we are listening and we, you know, appreciate their feedback and we want to be a resource to them. And so that really is kind of the business walk in a nutshell. And I have to thank city staff. I know we had some council members. Trung, who is here, one of our engineers who's overseeing the C Street project, was gracious enough to join us and, you know, was a great resource when it came to questions for C Street. So TJ Godati also came out on the code enforcement front, so it was really nice to have some city staff who had that knowledge base to provide some answers out there. That's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Amy, give us a detailed presentation. Counsel, anybody have a short response?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Just in defense of the one thing where there was an overwhelming amount of, well, not overwhelming, there's a large amount of people that said they had not heard of the C Street project. You know, I was one of the council members that was out there the day, and we did hear that from, it was primarily from the Lincoln Way. So to say that they were not, they're not going to be impacted at all would be false, but they're not on C, so I think that's probably why they hadn't heard of it, because they weren't one of the C Street businesses affected. Because I know, like Councilmember Vandenberg and I, visited every business on C Street some time ago and showed them the blueprints, like business by business to make sure we got input. But I mean, just looking at it back in retrospect after hearing that, maybe what we could have done is maybe go business to business even on, with C and Lincoln and just say, hey, here's a plan. We want to leave this with you, even though it's not going to affect your storefront. We want to let you know it's going to be happening right there on the corner going this way. So just looking back in the river mirror, before we even get started on the project, what we could have done, we could have maybe done that, just to be totally, I guess thorough or whatever, but yeah, but.
I do think that Mike Sellen will be talking about the marketing and outreach piece, and we are going to be sure that we include those Lincoln Way properties. There is a PR firm that was hired as part of this project, and they are very thorough. We've met with them. Genesis and I have actually met with them a couple of times, and Trung has been included as well. And so I think that we will not, everybody will know that this is going on and what to expect and when to expect it and when the closures are going to happen. So there will be a big piece of communication that is part of this whole project. We have a website that's been created. There's a dedicated phone number, dedicated email address, business cards that are being handed out, postcards that are going out in the mail. And so it's, I think that we should be able to cover that piece.
And I think that just, my last comment would be this, that that's probably another example of like where we've talked in the past where I think the city does a really good job with making information available. You know, we have, we had a lot of forums about the C Street, right, and invited everybody. But I think, again, sometimes, you know, making information available is not always as good as like pushing the information. It's like you almost have to like put it right in their face, you know, and to make sure they see it, because maybe people aren't on social media, they're not on the internet, so they don't see those posts, and they're not following. And some of those businesses on Lincoln are those businesses that are not really following the city webpage or, you know, when plans are being put up there and stuff. So anyways, but it was good. It was good to talk to those people. I think what I got from that whole day was that there was, people were surprised we were there talking to them. They were like, oh, yeah, sure, I'll, yeah, I would like to talk to you. And they were very engaged, and some of them had never been approached by a city person in the city ever before, so they liked that. So, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me, Amy. It was a pleasure to help do the survey. I found it very informative. We were able to help a couple businesses with small issues directly, and I also found that Brewster's afterwards, talking to everybody involved, I found it was, is just as beneficial, actually. So I hope we do it again and often. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's move on to next agenda item, H, public comment.
No public comment.
Thank you, Tina. On the next agenda item, I, report by city council members on regional board, commission, and committees. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I've reported out on our SACOG board meeting on Monday, the 11th. We had a recap of the year and then voted on, voted to elect Michael Saragosa, who's a Placer Real Council Member, is the chair for the board for 2024. And then Elk Grove Council Member Darren Soon was also elected as the vice chair. Meetings for next year will be in person throughout the region and primarily downtown. So as it stands now, the meetings for the committees have been by Zoom, and now we're all going to in person. And then I attended the SACOG Strategic Planning Committee meeting where main topic of conversation was the issue of developing a tolling authority for a tolling project that's coming on Interstate 80 from the Yolo-Solano County line to downtown Sacramento. And then other future projects will be I-5 from the airport down to South Sacramento and Highway 80 out to Roseville from downtown. And so there was a lot of discussion on how that JPA would be formed, and some good input that was given to, to the group, including Yolo Transportation District and who's the lead on the project for the I-80 in Yolo County. And so that was a good, a good meeting, and I think more to come on that. So just so everyone knows, there are toll lanes coming at some point. There's about $86 million federal money that has been received to begin the project on I-80. It's likely going to be a few years from being constructed, but people will have the opportunity to pay more to drive that stretch of road. And if you don't want to pay, you just stay in the other lanes, and so that's the basic concept that they're looking at. And then lastly, from Cal Cities, I was officially appointed by the Sacramento Valley Division, which is our region here, to serve on the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee with the chief again. So, and that is for 2024. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Papino.
I don't have anything. All my commissions are on a winter break, thankfully.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
The only thing I had was the mayor and I attended our inaugural, I guess we'll call it, our Quality of Life ad hoc. We met with Chief Kalnasky and the city attorney, and it was really just kind of just coming up with more or less like a mission statement on kind of what we think the committee will be about, and kicked around some ideas about moving forward and participants, and it was a good meeting, it was pretty lengthy, but I think we talked about a lot, covered a lot. I'm very optimistic about the potential of that, that ad hoc, and I look forward to bringing stuff back to the council from those meetings. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Myself, Councilmember Farmer already reported. I have nothing to report. Thank you. Next agenda item is information consent calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 6 be acted or simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member. Any council member want any information or want to pull any item from the consent?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item J-5 and, is it J? I'm sorry, yeah, J-5 and 6, just a quick question.
J-5 and J-6?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Madam Clerk, can you read for me item 1, 2, 3? I'm for.
1, receiving file warrants for period ending December 6, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting of December 5, 2003. Number 3 is the Corillian Boulevard Safety Improvements Project Engineering Services Contract Award. And number 4 is approval of the Liberty Ranch Large Lot Final Map and Elimination of the Requirement to Form a Homeowners Association.
Thank you. Any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Thank you. On these items 1 through 4, do I have a motion to approve?
Removed. Second.
Is moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk, may I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0. Okay, next agenda item is G-5. Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I apologize, Mike, I didn't reach out to you ahead of time on this. I've just been a little busy this week, but I just really wanted clarification. So there's additional, correct me if I'm wrong, just jump in any time, that we're being asked for additional $77,000 for some stuff, and then down here at the, basically says the alternative is the city council could choose to reject the contract amendment and direct staff to stay within the original contract amount and scope. So clearly, this is just, there's some additional thing that wants to be done, and you're asking for that. Can you just?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So there's really two things that came up basically when, after we got the consultant on board and meeting with operations staff and engineering staff, two things came up that weren't really scoped in the original RFP, and that was to go ahead and put a dedicated generator at the A Street lift station. This is a major lift station for the city, and so when we have power outages in the past, we have a couple of portable generators on trailers that we have to sometimes kind of juggle and do a bit of a leapfrog exercise, depending on how long the outage is. And so this being a major lift station for the city, so that was the first piece, was to put a dedicated generator there. And then the second piece was there is a existing six-inch water line that runs along the railroad there, and the A Street lift station, just for a quick edification, portion of it requires railroad approval because we're partially in there right of way. We have an easement, but we still have to get their approval when we do anything. So, so because we have to get approval for adding the generator, seeing that water line was there, it's old and it needs to be upsized, is kind of an opportunity, if you will, to kind of kill two birds with one stone. And since we're going to have to deal with the railroad anyway, which is And since we're going to have to deal with the railroad anyway, which is always challenging and time consuming, we thought, why not roll that in too? And so those are the two additional items that, to expand the scope, and that's what we're asking for under this item, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
There was just, and I'm reading back over it now, I just, there was some language in there that I just didn't quite understand. So you're repeating it, it sounds like it was really straightforward, but I don't know, for some reason, I just had noted those questions. Mayor, you want me to just continue with the next item? Are we doing together?
Yeah, J six.
So J six, my question on that was, I was just, if you could clarify, I was a little confused on, I guess, the verbiage of the truing up. So there was funding left over from transit. We have met all our transit needs. There's 2. whatever million dollars left over. And you're saying because of that, we can use that for, and it says in here, we can use it as long as approved by SECOG for road repairs. But it's had two line items that were for truing up something into financing. And then there was like a 200 and some thousand that was actually going to be used for road repairs. Can you just clarify?
Yeah, this is a bit of an accounting, I guess, exercise, if you will. And Mac could probably explain it better than me if he was here, so I'll, I'll make my best effort. So essentially, the, the money, we have to allocate our transit funds as to how we're going to spend them. And they were allocated, well, they're intended for transit operations. And there's really two pieces of transit funding here. There's the STA piece, and then there's the LTF piece. Apologies for the acronym. So state transportation account is STA, and then LTF is local transportation fund. Slight difference here is STA really is only for transit purposes. LTF, because it was created early on back in the seventies, it allowed for smaller sized agencies that may not have full on transit services to use those funds for road purposes, i.e. maintenance. And so because we're under the 50,000 population threshold for that, we can use any remaining funds in LTF for road purposes after we've met all of our transit needs. So those are the two funding sources here. The STA funds were allocated for normal operations, and this goes back the previous two fiscal years. So COVID was in effect to varying degrees or kind of waning, if you will. However, there were federal dollars that were made available to transit agencies through what was called the CARES Act. And so that was essentially a supplemental revenue source. And so what it essentially did was we don't need to use the STA, our normal operating revenues, because of the CARES funding came through. So the exercise for the large portion, mostly being STA, and then a portion of the LTF, was to reallocate that as to where we actually utilized it was for repayment of the loan that we did for the transit operations and maintenance facility when we purchased the property over 140 Enterprise. So that's kind of the true up or accounting exercise, if you will. Simply, there's no, you know, shifting of dollars, so to speak. It's just saying, we're going to, we actually spent it here for the loan rather than for operations, so.
And that wasn't my question. It just, it came off to me as like, it said to be used for road repairs, but the lion's share of it was, looked like what was paying off a loan. And I was just, I don't understand if that was, I mean, I'm sure it's legal, but I just didn't, was trying to understand how that was road repairs, even though it is the transit station, so.
Yeah, so it's that remainder after the loan is basically all addressed and taken care of, there's that 200, and I think it was 60.
Fifty something, yeah.
Or so. So that's what's left in LTF, and that's what we can use to, you know, make road maintenance repairs elsewhere, anywhere within the city, basically. But we have to allocate it, otherwise we won't get our next annual tranche of money.
I understood that part, yeah. Okay. Okay. Thanks for the explanation. I appreciate that. That's, I think that's all I had.
Yeah, it is a bit of a, you know, complex follow that's bouncing to follow, so totally understand.
Mayor, I move to approve J five and J six.
Second.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I motioned, yes. I second.
Moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk may have a rule call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. All right, moving forward, item K, schedule matter notice of public hearing, subject Lippi Ranch subdivision project, Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a statement before we start the?
Yes.
Item. I, I just want to make a public statement that I met with Mr. Mark Nunez at the property. He didn't provide any other additional information that is not contained in the staff report. He provided a history of the property, and I appreciate him taking the time.
Likewise, I also visited the property with Mr. Nunez yesterday. Got a view from the inside, but no additional information beyond what's in the staff report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I as well, I actually visited the property on three different occasions. One was quite some time ago. We went and viewed the, the house structure and we kind of got a tour of that and what was the original and what's been altered and so on and so forth. And then we visited again, was invited out to look at the barn and kind of talked about the history of that and the structure and what had been done over the years to it and what was original and not. And so I'm just kind of trying to understand the historical, what was left of the actual historical, whatever. And then it was a second visit out for the same reason, which was more, I think it was this last summer, was the last two times I'd been out there. So, yeah, but the, the staff report's pretty thorough on discussing that stuff, and I'll have some questions. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight's item is the Lippi Ranch project. Tonight, Kristin Bits, our senior planner, she's been the lead on this project, will be giving the presentation. But before we get into that point, this project, it's been a journey to get here. It's taken a little bit more effort. It's had some turns and twists to it. But as far as the project goes, it was actually pretty easy. The property owners, both Mark and Anthony Nunez, they had a high expectation for what was going to take place on this property. I don't think there's many people in this community that don't know the Lippi name, the Olson name, or the Nunez name. It's, there's tradition there, there's history. And so there was a high expectation that something was going to take place. And then with Truelife Companies, Aiden Berry and Derek Spalding, this, their fourth project, following Cardoza 1, Cardoza 2, and Catarina Estates. And they agreed to, this was going to be a different project, something that they wanted to do a little bit different, just with the nature of what that property is. So with that, I'll turn this.
Good evening. So tonight's staff is asking the city council for approval of four separate recommendations. We are asking for the approval of the environmental impact report resolution, and approval of the general plan amendment resolution, approval of the rezone ordinance, and approval of the tentative subdivision map resolution. The planning commission held its public hearing back on November 16th. They ultimately recommended approval with a 5-0 vote. The planning commission recognized the value of the project, given its proximity to downtown and Old Town Galt and the surrounding built environment. So planning staff started working on this project in the summer of 2022. We held multiple meetings with the goal of providing the public with an opportunity to provide comments. Aside from the letters we received on the draft environmental impact report, we did not receive any public comments at any of the meetings. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee also participated in the application process as well. They were able to visit the site and ask questions and comments of staff. And at this time, the H PAC does not oppose the project. The project as designed is not common with the neighborhoods typically found in Galt. So by that nature, it meets the goals of the strategic plan because it does provide diverse housing. Staff has heard from both the planning commission and the city council over the last couple of years to respect the general plan and to focus on invil development when possible. The applicant, the applicant designed the project with this in mind and considered the surrounding built environment when creating the aesthetic of the homes and the site plan. Craig's going to go for the history of the project. Thank you.
Egg meal off? Again, there is a history on this property, and it dates back, you know, back towards the turn of the century. And that's been one of the twists with this, this property. It's not necessarily about the existing structures on there. There's four structures there. And you've got a barn that dates back quite a, quite a number of years. This is the Galt winery. And one of the questions we kept on getting asked was, well, could the project be redesigned in a manner that wouldn't require the preparation of an EIR? And again, it's not necessarily about the structures on the property. The, the old Lippi Ranch house has been heavily modified. I don't consider it the Lippi Ranch house. It's the Olson house. It's been, had a second floor added. It's been heavily modified. You have the Nunez house that was built in the sixties. The barn goes back and it is identified as what's historic on the property. It's had a rough time the last few years. Last winter wasn't exactly kind. And although Mark is a great carpenter, I don't know if there's too many right angles left in that barn. But what's significant about that property is the history of what took place there. And you can't disturb that. I don't care if you build one house or you build 94. It's going to change the nature of that property. It's going to change what historically took place. And there isn't a way to get past that. But how you do get past that is you document what's there, you provide a history, and that was done as part of the EIR. You put mitigation measures in place that this project's going to reuse the barn as much as possible. Use that wood for trail markings in a gazebo within an onsite park. So the tradition of the site is going to be maintained. But it's tough to do anything on that, on that site without altering that tradition, that history. And that tradition and history are somewhat gone. It hasn't been a winery in a number of years. All the cherry trees are gone. And you're just seeing an older, older property. This property is not included in the historic resource element of the general plan. It's not within the downtown revitalization area. And again, it's what the Lippi family did on that property. That's significant. It's not the current structures. And so there's a nuance there because I think the question starts to be is, well, can we preserve it? Well, you can't preserve it. What we would be saying is, don't do anything with the property, and time is going to take those structures away.
The project is located adjacent to the Segal Milk Plant property, and it's actually the last large lot near the downtown area that's yet to be developed. On your screen, you do see the area of green to the east of the project site, but that has since been developed as Catarina Estates. The property is currently has a low density residential designation, and with council's approval, we will be changing that to medium high density residential. The change allows a higher density project to be constructed. And this slide shows the general plan designation of the property and the surrounding properties. So you can see it is surrounded by residential properties, and the only neighborhood that is actually low density is to the south of Lippi Ranch. However, Lippi Ranch does not and will not have access to that neighborhood to the south, only to the north. So the question then for staff to consider really was, what do you do with a property that is adjacent to multifamily uses or higher residential uses on smaller lots, but has the potential to provide more homes than what it's currently zoned for and what its current general plan designation is? So we're developing something similar in density as, so it fits in with the existing built environment. The project requires a rezone as well, from R1A to R3PD. Doing so allows a higher density project. R3 is really ideal for Lippi Ranch because it, it becomes a site that's a transition to the R4 zoned properties to the north and west, and to the R2 property to the east, which is Catarina Estates, as long as the railroad. Higher density zoning designations are also what encompasses the downtown and the Old Town areas in the context of housing. So R3 really makes sense in this case. This is a picture of the zoning map, so similar to the general plan designation, you can see the surrounding zoning areas. So R3 makes sense, given the surrounding zoning designations. Lippi Ranch subdivision was designed with intent by the property owners and the applicant. It was very important that the development would be something different, something special, as Craig mentioned earlier. And this is accomplished through ample areas of open space, inclusive of a trail system, that takes advantage of the existing trees onsite and the views that the site currently offers. There will be historic markers on the site to carry forward the history of the Lippi family and their activities. And then an HOA will maintain the common areas and ensure that the site will be kept up.
One thing we want to make sure to clarify, this is a private development, these are private streets, so there is an HOA that maintains the streets as well as all the trails and open space.
Architecture is also part of the tentative subdivision map and is consistent with the styles of homes currently being built elsewhere in the community. These are just a couple of examples for you on the slide. Of course, you have the full design review pack in your packet. There are also off-street, off-site improvements with the Lippi Ranch project. So this will help with extending sewer and water supply as well as providing pedestrian improvements, which is important for expanded walkability to the downtown, Old Town areas from the site. The improvements are not as extensive as the ones that were undertaken for Catarina Estates, however, still important and still an investment and improvement for the community. And Craig's going to chat about the SEQA process before we wrap up.
Sure. One of the aspects of this project, and I'm sure this council doesn't every day see an EIR and statements of overriding consideration, it was interesting for staff as well. But the EIR process did allow for a more extensive environmental review of the property. It did allow for the public to have a greater level of participation, more public meetings. We did prepare an initial study originally. It then tiered off to a draft EIR. There was scoping meeting for that to provide additional comments. We did hold meetings that weren't necessarily required under SEQA, but we did that for transparency. We wanted to get as many comments as we possibly could between a scoping meeting, another meeting in September to take comments. And again, all those comments did go into the document. And I think what we were trying to do is between making sure we're having all these public meetings, outreach to the community, I think that's kind of why you see an audience that you don't have a lot of controversy. I know how much this council requests me to bring you a lot of controversy. I do try to cut that out as much as I could, but we do try to make sure that we are doing a transparent process that are taking comments, and that the planning commission is doing their duty to provide you a project. Next slide, Kristin. So we did prepare the draft EIR. It did go out for a public review. The one focused measure of this EIR was in regard to the cultural and the historic nature of the property, which I explained, there isn't a different project that doesn't result in not preparing an EIR for this property because you are going to change the scope and. and nature of the property. Next slide. And so again, that is a significant impact. And tonight, we are requesting as part of the resolution for adopting the environmental document, that you are making statements of overriding consideration for the project. Next slide.
The Lippi Ranch subdivision is an in-fill project that was designed to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. From an environmental context, most impacts are mitigated, but not all, as Craig just discussed. But the history of Lippi Ranch will be documented for future generations. The trail system will be open to the public and residents will be able to walk to downtown Galt and take in all that the downtown area has to offer. The HOA maintains the property. There is a sound wall to reduce the railroad noise. And most of the existing oak trees will remain onsite. So with that, we are asking you to open the public hearing and receive comments. And upon closing the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the environmental impact report. Adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment. Introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance approving the proposed rezone. And finally, adopt the resolution approving the tentative subdivision map resolution. Thank you.
And staff's available to answer any questions you might have, as well as Mark Nunes, the property owner, and again, Aiden Barry and Derek Spalding with the True Life Company.
Thank you, staff. Before I open the public hearing, I will ask the council any short conversation with the staff or with anybody, or you want me to open the public hearing, then close the public hearing, then staff.
Can we just keep the hearing open while we make comments as well?
Yeah, but we need to open the public hearing, then close the public hearing. So I can open, but one way or the other, I have to close.
Yeah, you can, you can take some initial feedback for staff to, for council, for council to ask questions of staff as soon as the initial questions are answered. Then you open the public hearing. Then you can hear from the public and anyone else and have a discussion and then close at any time that you want before vote.
All right. Any council member wanting to be?
Yeah, I'll start off. I have a lot of stuff, but I just will start with a couple of things and we'll hear from the other council members and stuff. I do appreciate the extent of what was done on this with the outreach. I know I'm very concerned with the history of Galt. So this was a project that we obviously, I watched very closely and, and, you know, had many conversations with members of the Historical Society and their concerns. I think as I was able to hear from them and talk to, I actually spoke to Ms. Rodriguez today, which is my appointee to the Planning Commission, and got feedback from her on, you know, what were some of the concerns that she had and that came from the planning. I also spoke to Mr. Hoffman yesterday, I believe it was. And he kind of mentioned, you know, some of the dialogue and how we kind of got, because I wasn't privy to all those meetings. But one thing was very evident was with the barn, you know, being the really, I mean, the house is not the original Lippi house. It's more like the Olson house. And so, you know, if you start getting into the weeds about how, just because it's an old house or who it belonged to and such, I think you'd start getting, crossing a gray area where, you know, we start telling everybody in town if they have an old house that belonged to so-and-so, that we're going to, you know, step in and over, you know, I just, government has to be careful on that stuff, I think. But, you know, the thing with the barn was, as neat as it is, it's an old structure, you know, there's just so much, it needed so much work. And then, so for me, from a historical standpoint was, you know, if you restore the barn, then it's not original. And if you do that, who's going to pay for that? And what would it be? What would be the purpose of it? On the other hand, you know, because it wouldn't be safe unless it was restored. So the barn, although, is a neat structure to look at and there's some great lumber in there and stuff, ultimately, it had been modified so heavily over the years that it was just really interesting to reminisce about all the things that had taken place there and the history and the legacy there. But the structure itself is just not, obviously, it's not, it's not viable. So very interested to see what happens with the pieces of that. My second question that I'll bring up just right off the bat is, you mentioned the HOA. I'm happy to see that because I think if you look at another similar project to this, if there is one similar, would be over on the east side. I don't even know what you'd call that, but it's the, what is that project called, Craig? You know what I'm talking about, right? It's really got all the tight streets and everything.
Are you talking about?
Ashboro Lane, all those.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we saw what the absence of homeowners could turn something into, so I'm happy to see that. But my question is, that there's an HOA then on condition B32. Condition B32 is that we're adding it into CFD number, one of the new CFDs. So my question is, why are we doing that if these are private streets and they're not needed to have that? And secondly, because of that, we just voted earlier to remove the HOA from Liberty Ranch because the reason was that it was in the CFD. So, but in this case, it's the same thing. There's both. So can you tell me about that?
Let's, let's go back to Liberty Ranch. When that project was originally approved, the applicant had identified there was the potential to create these private villages within the overall Liberty Ranch project. And by that time, that project got before the, the city council back in 2016, that council said, we don't really want private facilities. We don't want HOAs. So there was that condition. It stayed, but you never had private facilities. They were all public. There was a requirement for CCNRs for, for the individual private developments, individual private homes. But there weren't public spaces for the HOA. The HOA for Liberty Ranch is not being taken out because there's a CFD. The HOA is being taken out because there aren't any private features for an HOA to fund. This is going to be different because these are all private streets. These are private public spaces where you see the landscaping, private detention basins. So an HOA is needed. Does that?
Yeah, no, it makes sense. So then with that, though, with your, in response to your, to your explanation is, one would ask, I mean, I'm just putting it through, like if I was looking at as a potential buyer, I would say, well, if I'm paying HOA fees to maintain the streets and pretty much everything in there, then why would I be paying a CFD? What is those dollars that I would be contributing, be paying for?
The CFD is broken up into three parts and I'm going to need.
Fire, safety, and then, so are they going to be paying only the fire, safety portion, not the landscaping, or?
So the landscaping portion, that one aspect of the CFD, and we've had projects like Parlin Oaks, and we've also had the Elliott project. Why am I? Veranda. Those were all part of the CFD. It's just that tier. So you have fire, you have services for police and what makes City Hall run. And then you have this other fund, this silo, for a lot of the, the facilities there. When you have an HOA, that number makes that portion of the CFD go down. So you're not double dipping. It, it just, the CFD would have been more, but the HOA takes that number down. So, so you're absolutely not double dipping between the CFD and the HOA.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I have some more stuff, but I'm going to relinquish the floor to my peers here and the public.
I, I just, just real quick. So, you know, the Planning Commission, I understand they asked a lot of questions, which my appointee has a long history in Galt. And it's, it's a good planning commission, so I'm glad to see they're doing their job. It's kind of hard to preserve a history that, when you boil it down, really isn't there anymore. So, and I really thank you all, everybody involved, for considering the history and respecting, you know, looking into it, respecting it the best they can. The city is, in the end, the communities they allow to be built. And so I'm actually glad to see that it's an HOA to help elevate this as much as possible, I guess. So that's all I really have. I look forward to supporting this.
Yeah, I won't comment on everything my colleagues have, but I will say that I, I too appreciate the Planning Commission taking the time and, and my appointee reaching out and some side conversations with others. I do think that the history is, is huge, but in this case, especially after walking the property and seeing the additions to both the house and, and the barn, and it really kind of all made sense. And so I appreciate the hard work by the Planning Commission and certainly by city staff and property owner and developer on this. And I look forward to supporting this as well.
And I won't be redundant with respect to the historical discussion. I think it's, it's pretty clear that this is the right decision to put this property to other use to serve the community. And the history will clearly be respected. This is, I think, one of the most discussed projects since I've been on the Planning Commission and up here, whether that was through twists and turns or just thoroughness. And from a bigger, wider perspective, I can't think of a way to put diverse housing near the city core to encourage walkability to our businesses than the plan that's come forward. And, you know, it's a lot of years in the, in the making and, you know, it's just, I can't, like I say, I can't think of a, a way to do it better. So I thank the staff and for all of your years of hard work on it. And of course, the Planning Commission for also considering and reconsidering.
Thank you, Mr. Pupinow. I don't have that many comment, but I do to read because this is a big report. I did read a lot of staff report. Thank you, Community Development Director, his staff. I know this kind of project is not easy to go through the planning department, go to the council, because this is like an R1, R2, R3 is a different zone. And we all know, living in this city, including myself a long time, if I'm living in a single family home, I do not want to be next to me have a R4 or R3. But, you know, state pushing that issue or citizen wants to be affordable housing. If every lot in this city is 6,500 and it's very hard to be, as a developer, to sell that house as a lower price. But thank you for the developer, you know, they have to spend some more money on the SEQA, but that's the processes. And thank you for the staff make every effort to do it. The only thing, I just want to be, understand the R3PD, can you, what that mean?
Within our zoning designation, it does allow for R3. It sets specific lot sizes and it sets density. Although this project does meet the density, the R3 has a density of anywhere from eight to 14 units per acre. This project comes in at 10. What the PD did, it allowed staff and the, the development team an opportunity to kind of package something together. So you know that if you're approving this project, you know what the architecture of the houses are going to be. The PD allows us to maybe grant some different design standards, but it also allows us to go, well, if you want these things, well, we want some things too. We want to preserve as many oak trees as we can. So there's going to be this trail along the outside. And if we're going to have some smaller lots, well, that trail serves almost as a mimicking setback between the other houses. So you sit back and go, well, it's not a five-foot rear yard setback. You have 35 feet that goes all the way around the project. So we were trying to blend this project. I would say the PD allows staff and the city a greater deal of flexibility for design, but to come up with unique features, the, the only way to get there is a planned development. So I think it allows us to give something, but get something back. And I think what we got back was a very unique design and unique features.
Thank you. And the other thing I just want to, you know, there is a letter getting from the Caltrain, right? And they're like a normal person, look like their project is too far from 99. And Caltrain still sending the letter, you, you have too much impact on the 99. What kind of impact on that 96 homes can be impact on the 99 according to Caltrain? I know you guys satisfied with them and?
Sure. Caltrans was provided an opportunity to comment on the original project when it was routed. We, we get a project in, we route it to various agencies, they'll provide some comments. And maybe there needs to be some tweaks. They didn't provide comments there. Then we sent out the document preparing the initial study. We sent that out and they didn't provide any comments there. Then we prepared the draft EIR and we sent that out and we didn't get comments there. And then we provided, prepared the final EIR and then we got a comment letter. And they're allowed to comment. It would be nice if they would comment early in the process where you could actually do something. But I don't think that they truly looked at the scope of the project. They never asked for a traffic study to say, what's the dispersal pattern of these houses? How many people are going to just get right on to Lincoln Way and head south to, to Galt? How many are going to stay in town? How many people might head out to I-5 on cost? How many might head out to I-5 on, on Twin Cities? How many people are actually going to go on to Highway 99 through C Street or A Street or get onto that road a different way? They never asked us for a dispersal pattern. So when they provided this comment, they didn't provide any information. You know, they've identified that there could be a potential impact. They haven't provided what that impact was. They identified that potentially some fees would be needed, but they've never prepared any type of impact analysis to identify on a per-house basis, what would that cost be? So they haven't fulfilled their obligation to provide a letter that provides us an ability to respond other than comment noted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pupinow. And now I'm going to open the public hearing. Any public comment? Any?
No public comment.
And if I may, make a shout out to the, the Chief of Police and just, sometimes we don't stop and just say thank you for everything you do and keeping our town safe. I know we're going through some interesting times, but personally, I just greatly appreciate what you do for our city. So thank you. My name is Aiden Barry. I'm with the True Life Companies. As Craig identified, this is our fourth project in your wonderful city. And I can proudly say that this is our best and we're going to continue getting better and better. Part of why it's better, if I may, this project required a general plan from day one, a general plan amendment. And your direction, when you brought Craig on board, was more transparency from the community. What that translated for us was some additional meetings, some workshops with your Planning Commission. And throughout this process, we've had the opportunity to, to chat about this project quite a bit. And we're excited about not only the feedback that we got through the Planning Commission study sessions and the detailed review, but also staff embracing this as a unique opportunity. And that was supported by your property owners, Mark and Anthony Nunes. What a unique opportunity as a developer coming into this community to not only work directly with your staff, but to partner with the property owner. Their sensitivity to the history of Galt is incredible, hands down. The two of them working together on kind of some of the discussions that have been contained in staff, as well as a lot of the meetings that you've had onsite. A very unique kind of relationship that these property owners have with this town. And they've shared that passion and compassion with us. And that's what's generated the plan that's in front of you. This is an exciting 94 lots. This is an exciting 94 lots. My partner, Derek Spalding, and I have been with True Life, I hate to say that now, for a little over 13 years, and I think he's got me by six months. He'd been working hard on creating this small lot concept that would allow for attainably priced housing, but on a single-family detached lot. So what we're looking at on the site plan now is really his brainchild and working with staff and the property owner to, to utilize the best possibility of this site within the inner core while preserving two legs of it for setback and open space. And within that setback along the existing trees, we're going to burden it, as staff has identified, with a public access easement. Because the whole success of this site will be the relationship of the new owners with that of the existing community being able to circulate through the old Lippi Ranch, around the property, and then back downtown, visiting the shops along the way. So we're excited about this. It's a unique architecture. They're all two-story, they're all small lot. As identified, it's an HOA. We are burning it with a public access, but the HOA allows us to maintain the common open space to the level that we are demanded by the city. So we're excited. And our, our schedule in front of us, assuming that we get your support tonight, is we're already working with staff on the development of the improvement plans and those will be submitted shortly. And we hope to be in a position where we're actually moving dirt on this property before September, October of next year. So I think I wanted to just introduce myself and say thank you to staff and the property owners specifically and to you all, and to make myself available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Berry, thank you for being here tonight. I do have questions for you, more just, I guess, clarification or maybe reassurances would be better. So clearly, I mean, I think it's a great project. I, it's a different project. It's different than what we have in town. I think I'm always, I think this whole council has been supportive of infill projects. I don't like sprawl, but infill is where I like to see it happen, if it's going to I, but, and I know there's many more important things, this project that you are focusing on, but the one part of it that's most important to me, because early on this project, I was accused, you know, publicly of not caring about the history of Galt because, you know, we were going to allow this project to happen and so on and so forth. And that perception has changed, but I just feel it's my duty just to, to get reassurances of the, some of the small, minute things that are important to me, but maybe not important to the entire project. But, so in some of the mitigation conditions it talks about, and it's been discussed here tonight, about using pieces of the barn and things like that to recreate some, maybe used on some benches and maybe a, some kind of patio pergola structure or whatever. And there's some mentions about the, the interpretive panels, which could include historical photographs, et cetera, et cetera. Can you kind of, I don't know, you don't have any renderings to show us, but can you kind of talk to me about what you envision for some of those things? What are those?
Yes. Be more than happy to. And then I think Mark may want to mention some specifics, but he's already been, both Mark and Anthony have been working with local folks that are interested in preserving some of the components of the barn and utilizing in other parts of town. So that's already got a life of its own for purposes of continuing on the story of the Lippi Ranch. But as it relates to the site itself, what we're going to be doing is working with the property owner on a kind of a deconstruction of a certain portion of the barn for reuse of the materials. And you've identified it in the pocket park that we have, whether there's a shade structure or a pergola would be rebuilt out of that material. On the trail system that goes throughout, the two legs of the site, we would be doing informational signage along the way, utilizing that material for either benches or information and/or additional photographs. So every place that we have the opportunity in working with Mark and his brother on utilizing materials out of that barn, you will see that kind of completely embraced by our landscape architect or landscape architect as we get into the working drawings of the landscape component of the site, where we're going to be reusing those components of the, of the barn itself. So you will see it kind of spread throughout the site.
Okay. Well, that's, I'm glad to hear that. I look forward to seeing some of those because that's going to be, and I think that was, you know, like it was mentioned by Councilman Vanderburg, you know, I think we have a lot of trust in our, we have a great Planning Commission. I think we have, some of our appointees are multi-generational Galt people in there. So we, we really lean on them for their historical expertise when it comes to things like this. And we have the Historical Preservation Committee, which this went before. So it's, this is, went before all the people, I think, that I trust. And, and they've given their blessing on it, which was very powerful, because if any one of those people would have had concerns, it would have been a deal, you know, to discuss. So I will look forward to seeing that stuff and I think that it'll be a good tribute to the project. The only other question I think I have for you, let's see here, there was mention about the oak trees. I think there is three trees being removed, I believe it was?
Yes. Having to do with roadway conflicts up towards the entrance of the project, yes. So as we mentioned at the Planning Commission and I'll reiterate it here, once we get into the process of kind of completing our improvement plans, we have to do an audit through an arborist of the condition of all the trees along the perimeter. The property owners identified, there's a couple of trees that need some help. So we'll be doing an arborist report and probably some remedial deadwooding of some of the material to make sure that there's not some issues that occurred earlier in the year. So, but yes, the, the ones that are removing, are being removed, are being removed specifically because of conflicts with roadway utilities.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that there's a reimbursement to tree fund with, for those and it's kind of interesting. So I think I have something else, but it's not really a question for you, Mr. Berry. So again, I appreciate you guys, you know, continue to invest in Galt, being your third project. I do think it's, it's an interesting project and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how it turns out. And I'm confident that Mark and Anthony will, you know, do right by it with providing you guys some insight or whatever in the materials to, you know, do the things you talked about. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I would be remiss, if you don't mind, just one off-topic subject. We've got 43 assets under control as True Life Companies right now throughout the United States. Hands down, Galt is the best community that I do business in on behalf of our entire company. So I want to thank you as a council for providing the policy and the leadership, and very specifically to your staff, from Planning and Public Works and the rest of it. I appreciate working with each and every one of you. And yes, that timeframe of a year and a half looked long and there was a lot of work that went into this, but you have an awesome staff. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. If any other public comment? Have no public comment, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And then going back to the council, it's last chance to any comment on this project.
Yeah, so my last thing would be, there was discussion earlier, Ms. Bits, when you did your slide, it was talking about, I guess it was maybe the slide that said accomplishments or conclusions? I think it was conclusions. Go back to that one. Yeah, there. So as mentioned, and then Mr. Papino mentioned it as well, you know, talk about the walkability and all that. I know there's sidewalk improvements that are going to, that True Life is going to be doing, and unfortunately, these are the things that they always probably don't like to do, the things that are outside of their actual project, but are kind of the things that are sort of required. So I appreciate the sidewalk, just to be clear, there is sidewalk improvement's going to happen on the east side of the street in front of the Segal Milk property. But my concern is, and I appreciate that, my concern is, we talk about walkability and access, but we all know, those are familiar, that once you get to the corner there, there's no more walkability or access from there. There's like a gap from there to the railroad tracks to get over. So in fact, you couldn't walk to Old Town from here. So I know, but I know that with that said, there is a, you know, another possible project lingering in the wings, maybe with the Segal Milk property. And I would assume that that would probably be a contingency of that, to have that improved. But I would just like to get your input from that, Mr. Hoffmann, about what I'm talking about here.
You're talking about what, more on what's going on on F Street?
Well, yeah, when you get to F, that's pretty much the end of the sidewalk, right?
I mean, it isn't a true sidewalk. It's asphalt with a lip that somewhat protects it. You're right. That, that's a frontage onto the Segal Milk plant. We have hopes that we are going to see that project built. And we do have struggles with the railroad as far as what can take place within the right-of-way. I would tell you that the Lippi Ranch project is providing as many off-site improvements is from a nexus standpoint that we could say it makes sense. The other thing that it does is, it does clean up very old water and sewer lines in the area. So there are utility improvements that are being made. I do understand your concerns.
You know, now that I'm thinking about it, you actually are, there is, there is that, there's that small asphalt curb. And then there's like asphalt, there's a small, it's not a sidewalk, but it is actually on the pedestrian side of that curb, right? Before you get into the actual dirt and grass and stuff.
It, it's on both sides, but it's not the formal sidewalk that...
So, so actually it is wa, I mean, you could walk that. It's not, I was, for some, for some reason, I was thinking it was grass, dirt, and then there's the curb, and then there's the street. And I was like, you can't walk there. But, you know, as a kid, I remember, yeah, you're right, there is, there is there. So I only bring that up not to like, you know, try to throw a monkey wrench or anything or imply that I wish that they would do more, because I'm sure they're doing a lot. I just simply state that I would be, I would, I would hope to see that if something becomes of that milk property, that we definitely, I will very much be insisting that we see some improvement on that frontal piece there, which I'm sure we would, but I just want to bring that up. I think that's, I think that's all that I had on this. Yeah. I think that was it. So thank you, Mr. Hoffmann, for answering my questions.
Thank you. Madam, could you read for me that key recommendation action?
Yes.
Thank you.
Received, so we need to adopt the resolution approving the environmental impact report, adopting, adopting Sequa findings, adopt a statement of overriding considerations, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Lippi Ranch subdivision project. Four, adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment of 8.99 acres from low density residential to medium high-density residential for the Lippi Ranch subdivision project. Introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance approving the proposed rezoning of the 8.99 acres from R1A to R3-PD for the Lippi Ranch subdivision project. And adopt the resolution approving the tentative subdivision map subdividing the 8.99 acre site into 94 single-family lots for the Lippi Ranch subdivision project.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Lozano and second by Papino.
So which one was it?
Rich and Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next agenda item, regular calendar, Parks and Recreation Department. Subject, Saturday Market Series recap.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll be calling up Jackie Garcia, our Special Events Manager, to give you a recap of our Saturday market for 2023.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. Today I'm excited to share the Saturday Market Series recap from March through November of this year. Our goal, when we were given the direction to move forward with the Saturday market, our goal again was to make sure that we were providing this series to the community, building partnerships with the artisan vendors, mobile food trucks, and nonprofit businesses, connecting the community to engage with their neighbors, fostering the community pride and promoting outdoor activities. So with that, we were kicking it off, we kicked it off March of this year and it ran until November, changed the hours from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it was located, it started out located at the 4th Street Prominon. And then below is our social media platforms, which grew to the 2796 followers and that we have the 1,200 following. For this year, our financial sponsors were local businesses such as Papa's and Wings, Los Esletas, Brewster's, 76 Gas Station, Jamba Juice, and Baja Fresh. Not only were they partners in financial, but they also helped promote the Saturday Market on their Instagram pages, were also willing and engaging with additional ideas of what we could do to bring in more of the community members. In addition to the financial sponsors, we also had partnerships with Brian King as he provided musical entertainment every Saturday for, during the Saturday Market Series. We had local drummers come out and partner with us, which was a huge attraction to the community. And we also had compadres market for our Cinco de Mayo celebration come out and bring their dancing horses, as well as bring more awareness that we're doing this event. So for this slide right here, it shows how much we invested in our community and the trends for our visitors. This is a comparison for 2022 and our 2023, and this data was provided by currently Placer, and it shows there what our numbers were. And some of the lower numbers for this year were due to rain and high winds. So for vendor comparison, this will show versus 2022 and 23 series. Again, the 2022, we had 200 and, I'm sorry, I can't see them, 226. And then for 2023, we had 515, which was 130% increase in vendor involvement. And this included not only our artisan vendors, but nonprofits, informational vendors, any vendors that were collaborated in our application process. So when we kicked off and presented this to you, we anticipated and projected that we were going to, our goal was going to reach out to 250 vendors for the entire series, projecting about 12,500 of revenue. Food vendors and prepackaged was 135 and projecting 10,125. Produce vendors was 24 at 960 for projected revenue. And informational vendors was going to be 64 and a total revenue of 1,600. The total for the series would have been 473 and the estimated revenue was about 25,000 we're expecting. So our accomplishment for this year was total vendors confirmed was 279 and we brought in about 14,800. Food vendors was 90. Prepackaged vendors was 63. Produce vendors was three, I mean, yeah, three. Informational vendors were 79. Antique vendors was 37 and sponsorships, which were five of the financial ones, which is a total actual vendors that we had was 514. In addition to us connecting with the vendors, we also had a partnership with Fields and More Production. They brought in 275 vendors the entire series, which brought us a total for the year of 813. That 813 vendors is not the number of spaces that they rented out, it's just the total of applications that we received. So they could have rented more than one space. Okay, so the approved budget that we asked for was the 51975. The actual expenses that we used was 30,097 and one, that does not include the one-time actual expenses, which were the tables, the speakers, the stages, and the chairs. That was the 7223. Public work expenses, these were unforeseen costs due to traffic control and the expansion of the Saturday Market Series. That was the 5,827, which our total actual expenses were 43147. For the Saturday Market staffing expenses, the projected expense for the project specialist was the 45703 and we are about 4617, 178. In addition, because of the expansion and the demand of how much trash, traffic control we needed to have out there, we did have to bring in another recreation worker. So we didn't project for that, but the expense was the 3160. The four recreational workers that were included and projected in the expense was the 7365 and then the actual expense was the 10,438. So our projected expenses was 53, oh, 53,069 and the actual expenses was 59,780. actual expenses was fifty nine thousand seven seventy six. And again, the project specialist hours was supporting and coordination of the Saturday market. Galt flea market staff, some of the events caught, required more staffing to assist with any of the carnival games, informational booth, sometimes traffic control setting out the barricades, the delineators for notifications of no parking. So we did utilize galt flea market staff. And then Armando and my time as well is not included in the expense. So some of the new expenses that we occur, that occurred because of, again, the expansion, was the public work supervisor and equipment fee. This started in August because of the change of the traffic control and the map of expansion. So that was the fourteen fifty six ninety per event that we were charged from August till November. And then also, based on the discussion that we had with a public work supervisor, as well as making sure that we're providing implementation of the proper setup of traffic control and following the map, myself and another staff did go through traffic control, control technician training, so that was a new fee. So for 2024, potential new expenses would be the parks and parks staff also assisted with traffic control in the morning, so we would need to pay for that additional time. In addition, we need to pay for a fire inspection fee, which would be a thousand dollars one-time fee for the entire series. And we also, because of the number of attendees that we had attend, we would need to increase usage or rental of portable restrooms. So with the exciting news and the presentation, we are asking that you receive the presentation and provide direction to staff on the 2024 Saturday Market Series. And again, thank you for your support and attending our series this year.
Thank you, Jackie Garcia. You gave us the full report of what we was doing in twenty two and twenty three, and we did a very good job. We have more vendor twenty three than twenty two, and I believe we have more visitor around twenty two to twenty three. I will support it, but only my one little bit concern on maybe with the Armando. You know that twenty twenty three, there's sixty eight thousand three oh eight, that's why we lose that, right, for twenty twenty three, right? There's gain or lose? As you know, there's a physical analysis on the staff report. That's kind of snap, snapshot. I think this is on the staff report, not on the slide. But, but anyway, I'd say the net operational loss in sixty eight thousand three oh eight.
Yes, after.
And then twenty four, you are propos, like in expecting eighty two thousand one hundred sixty one, right?
Correct.
But just like my concern, I will support that, because if that loss going to year to year increase, how we can add, as a physical responsibility, how we can control that? I do understand this flea market, we're getting the revenue might, might be behind the back from the, you know, the visitor coming in, they're going to this business. But I'm talking about, we losing the money, right? Year, year, and what you expect in, maybe this is twenty twenty four, that's your proposal, and what you think as your experience can happen in twenty twenty five?
Well, we increased our vendor size this year. We almost doubled it.
Right.
Our, our problem is, is that the cost to have it on the street is quite expensive. One of the ways to cut those costs would be to move it to a location where we would not close the streets. We could, your options could be move it to Veterans Field, the galt market grounds, you could move it into the parking lots without closing the streets. Those are other options to cut those costs back. But with those there, it.
But I'm, the way we're doing, it look like that losses can going to increase year to year.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping we'll close that gap, but I'm, I'm not sure that we'll ever recoup. I would like to break even at one point. I just don't know when that'll be. I think Jackie and, and the staff did an incredible job this year. It's just, it's going to cost us money to keep this going. The momentum's there. It's just, do you want to invest into it another year to see where we are? That gives you a good three-year average to see if we can make this work.
All right. I, I will support it. I told you, but that's kind of my concern, or that's, I was looking for the report.
I understand the concern, and that's why I wanted to make sure it was in the report, so you guys could, could see that.
All right. The other council member?
Yeah, Mr. Sully, so just trying to understand what the mayor was talking about a little bit. His concern was the street closure costs increasing? Is that what we were just talking, like, because I, sorry, I was distracted by.
So from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, you'll see an increase in maintenance operation line item. Staffing stays about status quo. The revenue, we're, we're keeping the same.
These are the projected, the slide that showed what you're anticipating additional new costs for twenty four are going to be, right?
What the mayor was talking about is actually in the staff report on the second page, at the bottom table.
The new expenses, the street closure to two park staff, the fire inspection, that's what we're talking about, right?
The, so on the actual staff report, not the presentation?
I don't know. It takes me a while to flip through all those pages to get to that, because I'm on my computer. I'm just trying to understand, he was talking about, these are costs that you guys are anticipating that we're going to see next year over this year?
Correct.
And there, what again? Can you just?
M and O is fifty seven thousand, staffing fifty nine seven seven six, revenue projected at thirty four thousand six hundred and fifteen, and net operation loss gain is eighty two thousand one hundred and sixty one loss.
Um, because I'm, I'm just, I don't know, I feel super lost at the moment here. I, I was just looking at your slides here. I mean, like, for example, that slide, your total actual expenses were eight thousand dollars less than what you had budgeted. And then on the other slide, there was, you actually went over by six thousand. So.
If, if I may, while you're, while you're looking at it, sir, you know, thank you so much for all the hard work. Our pool loses money every year, but it provides a great benefit to the community. I, I view much of this the same way. I think it is doing so well because of the work you guys have all done in promoting different concepts every month. People have something to look forward to. There's a great struggle in the city to bring people to our community to spend money. This is something I believe the, what do you call it, the geo-tracking would prove out that this is doing exactly that. And what's maybe not written in the document, because you don't have everybody's financials, is that this helps feeds our business community. So there's, there's a hidden benefit there that maybe it's not calculated in the report. I'm curious, you know, it looks good to us, but what's your impression of how it's going? And where you see it in the future, what, what would you recommend, so to speak?
I'd, I'd like to see us do this one more year, at least one more year on Fourth Street. I think we're getting to a point where we may have to really consider expanding even more, or move it to a different location that, that's a little more cost effective so we can cut these costs.
That was kind of my next thought. My concern there is that, will we lose some of the charm if it's in the wrong location, for lack of a better term?
And that's a big concern. The other option would be to put it in the parking lot across from Spahn's Velvet Grill, and continue to use the promenade, and then possible traffic control on C Street and, and forth.
Okay. In, in general, I'm really supportive of it. I've been to it a bunch of times. I haven't heard a single bad thing about it. I think it, I think what it's providing the community far exceeds the expense that we're paying for it. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I was just, so what I'm hearing here is that the real expense that seems to be dragging is, is the street closure costs, right? That's what I'm seeing. I mean, what you're talking about is how we could better improve the, the, the financials of it would be to move the event onto the parking lot, and then move it and utilize maybe the entire grass area on the promenade and all that, and take it off the street. That's what, that's what I'm hearing from you guys, right? And maybe, and it actually doesn't sound like a bad idea, maybe that is. But, but I have in that conversation, I'm assuming that we're, those were, those are suggestions because of the costs that are involved with closing the streets and the traffic control. Is that where the, is that where some of your big overhead is, you think?
I think Councilman Vandenberg hit it on the head, where it loses its charm if we redesign it to be off of the street. I think having it on the street and including a lot of the, the businesses there at their door front truly helps.
No, I don't disagree with you. I, I would, I would really disagree with saying to move it completely away, like to Veterans Field or whatever, because I think that what makes it special is where it's at. But I think, what I'm, I'm just, what I'm, what I'm just trying to understand is I think where, you know, there's a lot of expenses, right? Is, are you just telling me that if, you know, there's M and O, right? I'm talking, so that's a big topic, right? That's a big category. What I'm trying to understand is where, where are the real costs that are, that are really hitting you hard? Is, is it just staff to put on the event, or is it street closure stuff? I'm trying to, because I'm trying to think of creative ways to.
Staffing is the number one cost. And the thing is, is that by expanding it to the south of C Street, you're adding more closures, you're adding more cleaning. We doubled every, we doubled the vendors. We really increased on the customers. So we're doing more cleanup, we're adding more porta potties. There's just, it's just more to clean, more to do. And the two staff I think we originally brought to you, it's just not, it's not enough.
Well, I, I think that, you know, obviously, you guys, it's done well. As Mr. Vandenberg said, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I believed in it. I believe, I think, I think the two of us very much had conversations before they even started. And the two of us, really, we believed in it so much that we went out and put up our own posters to promote it, right? You know, Vandenberg paid for them, and we went out and drove T-posts. So we believed in it, and we wanted it to succeed. I think you can't just measure success by dollars made, right? I mean, like he said, the pool is a huge community value. Does it make money? No. It's great that the flea market still makes money, because that's community value, and it makes money, and that's awesome. But I think for, you know, projected cost next year of eighty thousand, whatever, so you're looking at six thousand dollars a month, is the community value of this event to the community better, you know, outweigh the six thousand dollar cost per month to the community? I mean, that's, that's, that's peanuts in the grand scheme of things for a month. Every month. I, I just think it's, I think it's got huge community value. Where it goes in the future and the expand, you know, the footprint of it, how's it go? I mean, I look at the Lodi Street Fair and think about a huge thing that is for Lodi, even though they don't do it as often. But if you were to change that event and say, well, we're going to take the street fair off of, you know, the streets, and we're going to put it over in the great festival, well, it's not going to be the same event, right? I mean, it just wouldn't even be the same. So I agree with Mr. Vandenberg. I think you guys are doing a good job. I think you continue forward. I appreciate all the hard work, and I'm glad to see that there is progress. Hopefully, maybe we'll get to a point where we can start offsetting. But I don't have any other input besides just keep on keeping on, and I would support it for another year for sure.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the staff for all the work that's been done on this over the years. And I think I tell Jackie every time I see her out there, what a great event it is, because it just, it does keep getting better every month. And I think some of our statistics show that more people are coming, and so the word's getting around that. It's a good, a good thing. I also wanted just to make a couple of comments. My time out there, I spend talking to vendors about what they like about it, what they don't like. Every, I haven't had one vendor say they didn't like it. They just want us to control the weather a little bit better. But other than that, which is out of our control, obviously, I had one vendor tell me that they go to a lot of street fairs and, and parking lot fairs around the region. And the one thing that keeps them coming back is that there's an environment there, obviously created by the people that work here and, and are putting it together, that he notices that people aren't walking around looking at their phones. They're engaged with the vendors, they're engaged with the entertainment. And so I think that's just a, you know, testament to what we're doing. And, and I certainly would support moving it forward another year at least, and just echo that, you know, not, not every public benefit is, you know, break even. And so I, I just think this event is worth continuing. And, you know, if we can get it closer to break even, great. If not, let's look at what that looks like moving forward and, and try to address some of that. I did have one question that kind of popped up. Is there an option to maybe have our, one of the months, I don't know what month it would be, just whenever, to invite all of our nonprofit organizations, whether it be youth sports, or, you know, service organizations or whatever, to have a booth free of charge to advertise their organization? And, and kind of what the person was thinking was, maybe in one area, you know, designate that for our public service folks that are nonprofit, and they can pass out flyers to get more involvement in their organizations. I think that will then trickle back to the city in, in many ways, sales tax revenue and all those things that we, we live on. So I would just offer that up as a suggestion on, on maybe one of the themed months. I don't know what that would be, but, but certainly, I think that would give us an opportunity to showcase our nonprofit organizations. And then lastly, I would agree that, at least right now, moving it off of that street would certainly change the, the dynamic of it. And, and I think there's a huge benefit for our business owners down in, you know, all of the old town area, because people park far and wide to come. And, and I know I've been in some businesses down near Lincoln and, and C Street that have many, many people going during those, the market time. And so that's all I would offer, and continue to do a great job, and we appreciate the work you're doing.
And I would just echo that the benefit that I see to the community and to our businesses far exceeds what's shown on the profit loss statement for only our second year. So I would say, continue on and mirror the twenty three market in twenty four, expand as you can. On the topic of potentially moving, there are some parallel discussions going on in various places with the Chamber and I Know What Park and Rec, on potential improvements, enhancements to the promenade, to maybe control the weather better with some shade, and those kind of things. So that's definitely an attraction to the city, potentially for growth of this event, our events, but also as a venue for, for other things. So I don't think we should abandon that location. I think that really is, as some people have said, that's really part of the main attraction. So excellent work, and carry on.
As you, as we finish this up, if we could get direction on possibly work, how you would like to fund this?
Thank you, Armando. Thank you. That's a good report, and I believe we all are going to support for twenty twenty four. Anybody want to make a comment on funds?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind would be TOT money. I mean, clearly, it seems like that's what we should be collecting it for. Travel and tourism, you know, this is creating that. I don't know, Placer AI can give us stats at some point on how many people are outside of galt that come or whatever, but I'm sure there's got to be some people. So the first thing that come to mind would be that for me.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that in general. If some of that has to come out of general funds, I'm, I'm okay with that as well. If there were statistics that could be provided, that would help, but I'm good with it.
We can provide that information through the Placer software.
I have one last comment to add. It's kind of just maybe a future thought, but I know this has been discussed. It's kind of just a, maybe a future thought, but I know this has been discussed with Public Works way, way back. But should we ever be at a point where we're making repairs significant or whatever to any of the old town crosswalks or any of those areas? Because I know we have some issues with some of the, the, uh, paver stones from time to time, you know, that we've had to, whatever. But there's been discussion in past about how in hindsight, we could have done the strip where we could have had the slide in poles, you know, to block off, it would make street closure super, super easier compared. So just want to throw out there to keep that in mind. If we ever have discussions or there's a chance that it's something that could, that could be looked at, I would definitely be in favor of it. I think that would start reducing costs of having to do all the logisticals with the street closures, at least from a, you know, that standpoint. So let me just throw that out there since we're talking about market.
Thank you.
Was that a consensus for TOT?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe TOT going to the general fund, right?
The TOT.
Right, TOT is going to the general fund, so. All right, uh, moving along, uh, the next agenda item, L2, Community Oriented Policing Service COPS Grant Award. Chief Kalanowski.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, in the preparation of the two-year budget that we're living in, there was a request by Councilmember Farmer and was supported by council for us to look at opportunities to add a third SRO into the schools program within the community. And as a result of that, we did some work and, uh, my staff put together a COPS hiring grant, um, for an additional position within the department. We've been notified that we've been awarded that three-year grant and that helps offset the cons, costs of this additional position. This is the same, uh, approach that we took when we added the second SRO some years ago. And we started that and proved that success of that program, uh, with the use of this three-year, uh, grant. Um, so with that, the, uh, school district, um, has, uh, supported this concept, obviously in conjunction with council, and they've included the costing in their budgets. Uh, both districts, one district's going to hear it tomorrow night and the next district will hear this item on January 19th, I believe is the date, right in that week period. So, uh, they, um, all have seen the draft MOU prepared by the city, um, but it needs to see their decision makers for a final sign-off. But nonetheless, these, uh, this, uh, proposed MOU that's before you and the costing structure and the payment methodology is the same that's existed either with the grant or that same payment methodology in absence of the grant where some costs will go up for the school districts and the city in the out years. Um, as noted in staff report, the costs to the city and the districts will be about $20,000 a year to start, uh, during the first three years. Uh, there will be some, uh, CPI and other things, uh, benefit increases and things like that that occur. Um, and so that will drive some costs, but to start, it's $28,000 a year. Uh, in an effort to, um, launch a program that makes sense and is viable, uh, for this community and recognizes uh, the reality that we have a city with a population, uh, that are under the age of 15, of, uh, over 21% of our population is under the age of 15. And more specifically, the target range of 10 to 14, which are probably those youth who spend most of their time learning about the police and, and, and being familiar with your encounters and, and the benefits of law enforcement. Uh, age 10 to 14 is almost 9% of our population base. So with that as a backdrop, and then I'll add one more stat, just because I'm a numbers guy, drives all my fellow department heads crazy. Um, from ages zero to 19, the city has nearly 27% of its population base in that age range. So, um, I am doubling down on this program by also asking the city council to approve, um, not only this SRO, um, position through the MOU at the school district, but allocating the funds necessary to make this third position an embedded sergeant in the schools. Um, currently, the, uh, department runs with five patrol sergeants covering a 24-hour shift and one investigation sergeant. Um, but there are, there is work that needs to be consolidated. So we're driving that book of business, um, more efficiently in the organization. And that includes things like the diversion program, um, our explorer program. Obviously, the SRO program is, that's what this is all about. Um, the teen center activities and our CSOs would all fall under the umbrella of the supervisor who's embedded with the schools and has direct contact with the administrators and can do some higher level project work for me, um, related to youth activities in the community. So with that, uh, with that request, in addition to the 28,000, it would cost the city an extra $44,000 for a total of $72,000 a year, which I'm asking to be drawn down off the Measure R residuals that currently is, uh, exist in, um, our Measure R, uh, funding structure. Uh, this was run through, obviously through Mr. Boring and the city manager, and they concur there is the capacity to support this, this endeavor. Um, so with that, I present that to you. I want to add a couple of different pieces because I know this was been asked in, um, other venues about things we buy and then there's some additional cost. So we have the equipment, the training budget and those things necessary to support the, uh, youth services program as a unit within the organization without or with minor, you know, expenditure changes other than the costing of that supervisor. So that's the first piece. The second piece, in January or February, and this, um, will work through city hall staff and finance, I'll be coming back to you to assess a different item. That item has to do with, um, booking wait times at the main jail because of the May's dissent, consent decree. Uh, my staff is spending six hours or more some weekends in order to book an inmate into the main jail. Uh, so we're burning overtime like, uh, we've never done before. So that's a problem. So we're going to have to come back for an appropriation. But I'm working with HR on creating a booking officer position that's going to relieve, um, that burden on the officers. That position's a non-sworn position, limited term, and provide some breathing room for us. Um, like other agencies, Citrus Heights PD, for example, is doing the very same thing. Um, while the county continues to work through this challenge of getting folks booked at the main jail due to the May's dissent, consent decree, which has, is all medical and mental health-based obstacles of getting folks through the door. I'm just giving you a high-level overview only because I don't want you to agree to something today. And I show up in February and people start looking at me crazy, saying, I didn't know this other thing was coming and you were going to be asking for some funding. So I just want you to sort of have that full picture as we move forward, that that is coming. Staff is aware, um, city hall staff, department heads, the city manager and my internal staff, because there's been an outcry for that support. And, um, it's dicey if I have a person, it, the staffing gets very dicey in the community, late, late hours or early morning hours. If I have somebody, uh, in Sacramento for six hours, I, without saying more about that, that's why I'll leave it. And that's why I want you to know that's coming. However, back on this item, just so, I just want you to have that transparency. On this item, um, this, uh, additional, uh, position obviously is going to support all the activities in the schools. Uh, can be a, um, allow more support at those cast meetings. I know we get invited from time to time, but maybe we need to be, uh, more regularly attending or at least more engaged when there's more relevant items related to safety. And all those efforts that support the, um, the schools and those activities, you know, going to and coming from and after hours with the, with the youth center. So with that, that's my proposal to you. The item is a recommendation to allow the city manager to execute an MOU, uh, authorizing the appropriation of Measure R funds through, uh, Fund 47 for the remainder of this year. And, um, we will launch this endeavor with your blessing and the blessing of both districts. Uh, the MOU currently says April 1st. The authority and the resolution allows some minor modifications through the city attorney and the city manager. So if things clear up with the district sooner, we can launch that a little quicker. But for purposes of the resolution, it does say April 1st. And I, that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, chief. Any councilmember, any, any comment?
Uh, I'm glad to see it. It's, uh, I don't really have any questions. It's an exercise in redundancy, fortunately. And I, I'm really glad that we can support our young people in this manner.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Um, as you know, I've been squawking about this for a long time. So squeaky wheel gets the oil. Thank you so much for finding that funding and be able to, and Measure R, I mean, clearly, you know, the original verbiage, there's time to time some, you know, concern about whether Measure R is being used appropriately, blah, blah, blah. But this squarely hits the nail on the head. I mean, this is what Measure R is about. And I always say, you know, any Measure R money just sitting there leftovers at the end of the year is just a waste because it's public for this, for the community, let's use it. So I'm happy to see this. I'm sure the school district will be ecstatic. I mean, I think I've already heard from one of them, they got wind of it a little bit and they were excited. So, yeah, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, um, as many know, this is kind of near and dear to my heart, having worked in the school system in that capacity for a long time. Um, so I preface this with, by saying I, I fully support it. Um, and I appreciate the, the work that the school resource officers are doing. I do have a, a couple of quick questions that kind of popped up in my mind here. Um, and I apologize, they didn't, I didn't think about them earlier. But, um, but first of all, I, I just want to be sure that we are, I, we're adding another supervisor. And I just want to make sure that our patrol staffing is going to be able to be maintained at a level that's appropriate for the, for minimum staffing. And again, I don't want to get into operational things, but I, but I think that's, that's important to say, um, just because, um, although the schools is a, are a piece of what we do, uh, we also do have a responsibility to the community for calls for service. I like the idea, um, and I know this isn't on the agenda, but I'd like the idea of your, um, thought about getting officers out of the booking loop, uh, sooner. Um, I know that can be, um, I can't imagine being there six hours. I've been down there for two and a half sometimes, uh, but never that long. So I think that's good. Um, the other piece is, uh, in the contract, I think I read this, I just want to make sure that I read it right. Um, for other duties outside of the normal school day, such as basketball games, football games, things like that, where either we as a city and department are requiring additional services for officers to be there, or the school district is requesting it, that comes at no, other, no extra cost to the school district?
So there is a blend. So some of the events, um, that are pre-programmed events, like the football games, we will, uh, support those at the baseline of the two officers. But if it happens to be, um, a game that could have some issues or some different things and they want increased, um, security services, then we would bill the school district for that. And then there are other activities that the school district can partake in that are sort of outside the norm and we would bill for those. But the idea was, um, to have that partnership, at least initially with the school district where they're paying a fee and then we weren't nickel and diming them on the backend for every little, uh, uh, I guess, every little thing in that regard. So, um, uh, there is some expenditure for that. It's not all dollar for dollar because some of my staff takes it in, uh, comp time and lieu of pay. Um, that's an individual decision. But we think it's a, the product that we have here in Galt is, um, is a solid approach that is mindful of the limited dollars around. And frankly, um, as alluded to by Councilmember Farmer, Measure R has a little capacity in future years. If it get, things get a little wonky, we could always revisit those topics.
Okay. I just, I just, I thought I read that and.
It's accurate.
Okay, good. And, uh, and I think just lastly, uh, continuing our partnership with school districts is so important. And, and like you said, we do have a, a large age group of our citizens are in that, uh, the, the formidable years, right? Of, of, of that. And so, um, and then just one last thing, I would just, um, and again, I don't want to get into operations because that's not what I do. But I do know that there are times where, um, school resource officers are asked to do things outside of a law enforcement, uh, arena. Uh, one being doing classroom presentations, which is, you know, totally valuable. Uh, working with kids that need additional help at the request of their parent. Um, but I just want to make sure that as we move forward with an increasing in staff, that we don't get into the position of, um, providing administrative support in the administrative area, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Of law enforcement, so.
Yes.
Um, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
So just real quick, having a spouse who's a assistant principal with two schools, um, frequent interactions with SROs, um, uh, 99% always positive. I get good reports. So I appreciate the program and appreciate you finding a way through the grant to, uh, to be able to extend it, extend it out. Um, you know, not just the schools, but like you mentioned, the, the whole youth as a whole, because it kind of all, all goes together. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for your detailed report. It's already mentioned everything in the report. Uh, that's a very reasonable what you are asking. I will support that. Any public comment on this agenda item?
No public comment.
Thank you. And now I would like to have motion on that agenda item.
Move to approve.
Is move my councilmember Farmer, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Yeah. Second by Farmer.
I did, yeah. I couldn't hear the rest.
And Madam Clerk, may I have your roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes with five to zero. Okay, moving along forward, the next agenda item is L3, Public Work Department. Award of Best George Reed Incorporation for Construction of C Street Enhancement Project. CIP 520F, CEQA Notes of Exemption, Senate Pail 288, and NEP Categorical Exclusion. Mr. Saling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I get started here, I just want to take a moment to, yes, uh, recognize, uh, one of our staff members, uh, Senior Engineer Trung Trin, who's in the back here. Uh, he has been the project engineer and project manager on this project. Uh, and I'm going to touch on the brief history. So as I kind of go through that, uh, you'll gain a, a bit more of an understanding of, uh, of some of the process that, that he's, uh, shepherded this project, uh, through. So, uh, with that, uh, and, and I guess, uh, you know, longtime staff member, uh, uh, very experienced. And, uh, obviously this is a major project for the city. And, you know, I can tell you as a fellow engineer that these projects only come along every, maybe once or twice in your career kind of thing. So, uh, so this is a big one. Uh, and he's done an admirable, admirable job in, uh, in, uh, shepherding this project through the process to the point where we are today. Um, I mean, I had prepared some remarks and then, uh, I got some clarification, I think, on a question. So you see a slide up there, which I'll get to in a minute here, uh, because hopefully that, that's, uh, the information that, uh, will help clarify things, uh, for the council. But, uh, to start off, as far as a brief history on this, in 2016, uh, this, uh, segment of C Street was part of the Central Galt Complete Streets project. Uh, however, it wasn't constructed at that time due to a lack of funding. Uh, fast forward a little bit, in 2019, uh, the city received a $2.5 million construction grant from SECOG, uh, to help, uh, fund the project. Uh, and then, uh, a couple of years later, in April of '21, uh, we hired a design consultant, uh, Somas. And then later that year, in October, the council, uh, was updated and presented a couple of options. And, uh, after extensive outreach was done, I'll note, uh, and option two was preferred at that time, uh, which was essentially to reduce some landscape medians and, and including, uh, the Savmar Middle driveway. And when I get to the slides, I'll, I'll go through those, those, uh, changes that were requested at that time. Uh, and then in December, subsequently, subsequently in December, we came back, uh, with some changes. And there were a few more changes, uh, made at that time. And I'll touch on those also. But, uh, essentially what they were, were some small expansions to landscape medians, elimination of the median at Dry Creek Liquors, bulbouts at 7th Street, uh, for traffic calming and pedestrian safety. Uh, and then retaining the ped crossing, pedestrian crossing at the east side of South Maple Street. Uh, next, uh, in June, about six months later in '22, the environmental document was approved. And then, uh, fast forward another nine months or so, in March of '23, we received a second, uh, SECOG grant of about 2.7 million to, uh, to fund the project. Um, and, uh, at that time also, uh, we brought to council and council approved a construction management contract. contract with KSN, who is the consultant there. And that has a robust outreach component to their contract. And I'll get into some of that here, as Amy touched on earlier tonight. And then lastly, as far as the history goes, in, in August of this year, we received another half a million dollars from the Community Development Block Grant, and that's through the SHIRA, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. So now we get to tonight, and we're essentially asking the council to consider awarding a construction contract to George Reed Inc. for 6.456 million dollars, and that includes a contingency. The city advertised the project back in September, and we received five bids. George Reed was the lowest at 5.614 million dollars. And just for reference, the engineer's estimate was a little over 5.8 million. So George Reed's bid was a little about, almost $200,000 lower than the engineer's estimate. So just to give you a sense of, of the value that we're looking at here. The city did receive a protest from Lund Construction, who was the second low bidder. And, you know, you're talking 5.6 million dollars, there was only $32,000 separating those two, the low bid and the second low bid. Lund Construction's protests essentially hinged on that George Reed did not submit all of their bid forms that were required at the time of submitting their bid. Staff worked with council and reviewing that, and essentially Lund's protest was denied on the basis that George Reed was not required to submit all of those forms at the time of the bid. So, so staff responded with a denial letter to Lund Construction, and we have not heard anything back from Lund Construction. I don't know if anyone's in the audience tonight for them, but we have not heard anything to this point. So we've reviewed George Reed. They are a qualified and responsible contractor. They have no filings, no judgments against them. So subsequently, in this item, absent the construction contract, there's an additional request of $48,000 for SOMAS, the design consultant, to provide what we call design support during construction. And what that is, is let's say that there's something in the plans that the contractor might be interpreting one way to solicit, you know, review and analysis potentially from, from SOMAS, the design consultant, to clarify something. So those are rare to come up, but on a project this size, you know, it's definitely a prudent step to have that in place. So there is that piece to it, and that would be the Fourth Amendment to SOMAS's contract. So again, $48,000 for that potential. Project funding, you know, as I've touched on a little bit, has been secured through the additional SECOG and CDBG grants. There's another about $690,000 that will be coming from the city's Senate Bill One, RMRA funds, that's the road maintenance and rehabilitation account. This is money that was, you know, set aside through legislative action back in, I think it was 2016, where all cities and counties are apportioned a, a share of the funding for maintenance. And so that, that money is coming from that source. And then the last piece on this, there's about $120,000 coming from Fund Five to address some water lines that we want to take advantage of while the construction's there to replace those. So similar to what I touched on earlier with the Ace Relief Station. So we're trying to take advantage where we can, where we've got contractors working. Lastly, I'm just going to note, it was mentioned in the staff report, there are some utility pole relocations involved in this corridor, and we don't know what those final costs will be with smud. We estimate it's about $165,000 or so. That money would actually come from Fund Twenty-Nine, I believe. So if, you know, whatever that number ends up being. So with that, I'm going to go through these slides here, and then I'll finish up on the outreach piece and, and what the projected schedule for the project is. So going back to December of '21, there were some options that were presented and modifications made. So basically, I'm going to start from going from west to east here. So on the west end, between Seventh and Sixth Street, this is what was proposed, was essentially, I don't know, I think this is, hopefully, I don't know if you can see the, the laser pointer. But what was proposed was, and, and again, part of this project is to, you know, maximize landscaping. So there was a landscape median here, just west of Seventh Street. However, and that would essentially block the left turn movements in from westbound into the Dry Creek Liquors. And we were proposing to modify the circulation, to essentially have traffic come down Seventh Street and enter the parking lot this way. So you see that modification there. And then there was an extended landscape median over here. And, but where we ended up, through the discussion and direction from council, was to essentially leave this a two-way left turn lane, so those left turns could come into the Dry Creek Liquors, and therefore we didn't need to make any changes to the circulation, restriping a portion of the parking lot. And so we removed that, that landscape portion there. And, but what, what was kept was these bulbouts here at Seventh Street, because it was determined that there was a significant pedestrian movement across here. The other thing was, that was important, coming through this curve here, there was a concern about trying to calm traffic speeds as they entered the Old Town area. And so by putting a median out here in these bulbouts, it essentially narrows the, the travel lane for vehicular traffic. And, and, and the benefit from that is you get traffic calming and reduced speeds. So that's where we ended up on that, on the west end. Kind of moving to the middle segment, and again, what was proposed at the time was, you can see here, there's a faint of the ladder crosswalk on the east side of Ma, South Maple Street. We were proposing at that time to move it over to the west side. The problem with that was the insurance company here, they use this as a driveway, and they expressed concern over that. The, so consequently, where we ended up was to keep it where it's at, and we extended a little bit of landscape median here. Again, provided a little bit of a landscape median here, just trying to maximize those opportunities. So that was the change in the, in the middle segment there, and that's where we ended up. And then shifting over to the east end of the project, what was proposed, again, proposed modification at the time, was to provide left turns in to the F&amp;M Bank, Starbucks, and, and the Galt Plaza Shopping Center, but to restrict the left turn movements out. And through that discussion that occurred, that was determined unacceptable, and so rejected. And so where we're at, the final configuration again here, is to retain the two-way left turn movement. So you've got crossing capability still, just as you do today, and you have full left-in, left-out access. So we've got a little bit of an expanded turn pocket, that's what that results in. We keep the full access, and we maximize the turn pocket at the signal at Civic into the center. So those were the three changes that came out of, you know, that discussion at the time, and hopefully that, that clarifies things where there were some questions or concerns. I'm just going to turn back to my notes again now, touch on the outreach. Again, KSN's contract for the construction management includes a, a significant outreach effort. And just to kind of go through some of the aspects of what that entails, there's a website that will be set up, there'll be business mailers that will be sent, postcards. Also too, you know, kind of touching on the, the Lincoln businesses, not being aware so much, we're going to go 500 feet out from C Street, essentially on both sides. So there will be postcards mailed out to everyone in that proximity. And then there will be text and email and website updates on a weekly or as-needed basis, depending on what's going on with the construction. So, and we've got a database that's occurred already. But another piece of this is there will be a, similar to what Amy did with the businesses for the economic piece, is to do that same thing, what it sounds like Councilman Farmer and Councilman Vandenberg did, as far as walking the project. But this will be a project walk to engage all the businesses, get any names, numbers, email addresses, so that they're in the database for the project. So they will get those text and email updates as they are put out. There'll be a project hotline, we'll provide the contact information there, the phone number. And the consultant will be coordinating with the post office, with any delivery companies that may be identified from some of the businesses, as to what their delivery schedules are, the schools, of course, and, and Calways for garbage service. So a very robust, you know, hate to use that word again, but anyway, effort for the outreach on this. The, the firm that does this, they are used to doing primarily transportation-type projects and, and do an outreach. So this is, you know, certainly right up their alley in, in terms of what they're familiar with and, and, you know, know all the angles, so to speak. The last thing I want to touch on too, is there will be detour signage, and I know there's already been some outreach to the vendors, but we'll work with Parks and Rec staff on that for the market, not only for the vendors, but also for patrons, for detour signage, so they can essentially navigate around the construction for that. And also for the general public, you know, for the, the businesses that are in the corridor. So they'll be able to navigate to the businesses during the construction. So, so that's kind of a, an overview of the outreach. And then last thing I want to touch on as far as the schedule, we're anticipating, again, based on if the council were to award the contract tonight, for construction to probably start in April, weather permitting, and then be completed prior to the end of the year, essentially, you know, January 1st or so of '25. Again, that's going to be weather-dependent, and assuming we don't hit any major snags or anything that could delay construction significantly, but that's what we're looking at. So given that schedule runs essentially over April to December, there's a potential for, well, yeah, there's a significant potential for it to impact the IDC events. So depending on what's going on with the construction at that point in time, we'll obviously be coordinating with parks as to if, if we need to modify any event routes, that kind of thing. Possibly for the lighting of the night as well, although, you know, we're hopeful that the construction will be largely complete and would not impact that event too much. But there is that potential. Again, if we hit some snags or bad weather or whatever that could significantly delay things, there's that potential. So just full disclosure, you know, and transparency for the council to be aware of that potential. So with that, I will stop and take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Any council member wanting to go?
You know I always have questions. I just want to say thanks for all the outreach you guys did. I can't, Jay and I looked at each other when you said December of '21, we're like, wow, it's been two years already. I think this was, this, this, you know, looking this over, thank you for providing this, by the way. I had a citizen come to me and ask why the, even though we had already pre-approved it, it wasn't included. And so I thought it was just helpful for it to include, so thank you for pivoting last minute and making that happen here. And it was nice to look at it again and say undoubtedly that this definitely reflects all the input we got, and all the little, I mean, looking at these little things here and remembering the conversations we have with certain people and at some of the forums and all, and just in person. So I think it's a good project for someone who's lived here all my life and traversed all these streets from either a young lad until now. I'm thinking about all people's movements and how they drive, and I think, I, I don't see any problems, I hope. I think it looks good. I, I'm looking forward to singing praises to Trung at the end of all this. Not to put any pressure on you, but I look forward to saying excellent job, it went great, no, no major hiccups. There's going to be some stuff. I know there's going to be some small stuff, for sure. And I, and I doubt that there, we'll go through the whole project without getting a little bit of grief from a couple of people, maybe, because there's going to be some slight inconveniences. And so if we can just minimize that. I just wanted to, you know, I was going to say before you made your comments, I just wanted to get reassurances again from George Reed and from KSN, but you've thoroughly covered that. I'm happy to hear the whole, you know, the website and contact information. It sounds like you guys are being overly thorough, and so that's going to be awesome. So with that, I don't have anything to add. I think it looks great. I look forward to seeing things kick off. Thanks, Mike.
Any questions?
Okay, perfect. The other point I wanted to make, or comment I wanted to make, is nice that we were able to gather some regional money from SECOG. It's about 5.2 million of the six and a half million dollar project. And I think your work constantly with SECOG staff on applications and things like that has just been monumental. And so I want to thank you for your work there and bringing that money here to our city.
I'm going to give full credit to Trung and John, so.
Yeah. So good work, and I look forward to the construction being complete. I know it's, there's going to be some bumps and bruises along the way, but I think the, the end product with all the community outreach we did is, is going to be something that everybody's going to be very proud of. So thanks.
I have no questions. It's exactly as we've seen it and requested it to come back, so eager to see it going forward.
Thank you. Same thing. I don't have no question. My colleagues already asked what I maybe will ask. Again, again, thank you, Mike Saling. Thank you, Trung. You are the most of working on that project. And that's, thank you, John Griffin back there. This is L3 Recommended Action, Adopted Resolution, Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Contract with George Reed Inc. in the amount of $5,639,500 for the construction of C State Enhancement Project, CIP 520F. Number Two, Authorize a 15% Project Contingency in the amount of $842,500. Authorize Amendment Number Four in the amount of $48,710 to SOMAS. Existing Contract for Construction Management. Authorize a 10% Contingency for SOMAS Amendment Number Four in the amount of $48,700. Authorize an Appropriation of $689,275 from the Gas Act Fund. 002 SB1 RMA Appointments. And $120,305 from the World Fund. Fund 005 for the C State Enhancement Project, CIP 520. Number Six, Authorize the Public Work Director to Execute Amendment with SOMAS within the approval contingency. Number Seven, Authorize the Public Work Director to Execute Contract Change Order within the approved contingency. Accept the Improvement and Issue a Notice of Completion. Accept The Improvement And Issue A Notice Of Completion On Satisfactory Completion Of Work. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Farmer. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by 5 to 0.
Thank you, Mike, for putting us on the map with the Galt City Council there. Not City Hall, Galt City Council. Feel so special.
I'll give credit to Somas on that.
All right, next agenda item, M Communication.
Just a reminder, the January 2nd, 2024 council meeting is canceled.
Thank you. And next agenda, N City Clerk's Report. Subject Review Of City Committees And Commissions, Ms. Hubert.
Okay, so on November 7th, 2017, City Council directed staff to place on the agenda on an annual basis during the month of December a review of standing committees and commissions and to make changes, if any. In 2011, City Council adopted ordinances for the various bodies which established the purpose function rules and regulations for each, excluding the Measure Our Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, which was part of a measure approved by the Galt voters in 2009. So I'm going to go by the, go through the committees and commissions that are, have appointments by individual council members. So we have the Beautification Committee, the Commission on Aging, the Youth Commission. And as, in February 5th, 2019, City Council changed the qualifications of an adult member on the Youth Commission. An adult member is a person must be resident and registered voter of the city. Up to two members of the commission may reside outside the city limits but within the boundaries of the Galt Joint Union High School District. And of those two members, up to one member may be at large. Member at large is defined as a person that is employed within the boundaries of the Galt Joint Union High School District but resides outside the boundaries of the Galt Joint Union High School District. The Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Public Safety Committee. And last year, March 1st, City Council changed the council members from two council members to one city council member. And then you have the appointments by the entire city council, which is the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee and the Measure Our Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. You have any changes on those, or?
I actually spoke to Councilman Vandenberg about taking the seat on the Youth Commission, and he...
No, this is, can be next agenda.
Yeah, that will be the next one. This is just.
This is just the, a local committee is not yet.
Oh, this is the, oh, do we want any changes for the appointments for the?
Yes, such as I could add my missing appointment, which I don't have, but.
Right, it's just, we're just bringing it annually just for a quick review and.
And I was thinking, this subject matters if we want to change anything to any committee. I can remember last time we did.
Got you, right.
I believe everything else is okay, then I'm going to move for.
I have a question, real quick. We have an appointment that is an entire council appointment for the Sacramento Environmental Commission. It's a three-year term, and it looks like it expires in June of '24. Will you bring that back sooner than later to address that end of the term?
Are you on the regional and local boards, commissions, and committees?
No, I'm on the outside agencies for our council appointment.
Yeah, right now, we're just on the review of the city commissions, city.
Yes, outside agencies. That's not part of this item either?
No, this is just the review of the city commissions and committees.
I don't feel so bad.
You mean, I don't feel so bad.
I don't think there's any changes, so we can move on.
No, that's right.
All right, so next agenda item is N2, Review Council Appointment To Regional And Local Board, Commission And Committees.
Okay, here we go. At the, again, at the city council meeting on November 7th, 2017, City Council requested an annual review every December of its appointments to local and regional bodies. So what I'll do is I'll go through each one individually, and you can say if you would like to remain on the committee or commission, or if you would like to step down, or. So I'll just go in order of the roster. So the first one, the local, is the Communities, Consumerless Community Service District, CSD 2x2. And we have Sandu and Lozano. The 457 Defer Compensation Plan, we have Vandenberg. I know they.
Once a year.
Okay.
I'll continue.
Cities and Schools Together Cast, we have Farmer, Papino, and Vandenberg as alternate.
Yeah, I'd like to remain on that.
Galt Youth Commission, Vandenberg.
As Councilman Farmer mentioned earlier, we discussed changing seats from him to me, or vice versa, I'm sorry. If that pleases the council.
Public Safety Committee, we have Sandu and Vandenberg as alternate.
I'm fine.
And we have outside agencies. The City Selection Committee is concurrent with the mayor term, so this will now be Sandu. The Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Desany is the city manager. Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or CACOG, is Lozano and Papino as alternate.
I'm okay with that.
Sacramento County Criminal Justice Cabinet, the chief of police. Sacramento Homeless Policy Council, we have Vandenberg.
I'll continue.
LAFCO, right now, is the city of Vailton through the end of December 2024. And then Galt starts in January 2025. Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, we have Papino and Vandenberg as alternate.
Continue with that.
Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, we have Papino. Sacramento Public Library Authority, we have Farmer and City of Vailton as alternate.
That's fine, I'll stay there.
South Sacramento Conservation Agency, Sandu and Vandenberg as alternate.
Say it again, please, the title?
South Sacramento Conservation Agency.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, as is.
All right.
Skip the Transportation Authority?
Yes, I did, sorry. Sacramento Transportation Authority, we have Sandu and Farmer as alternate.
Go team.
Okay, now South Sacramento Conservation Agency. Sandu and Vandenberg is alternate.
You okay with that, staying on with me as an alternate?
Okay, and that is? Okay, so now, what's one we're saying?
My question? The city council appoints two representative, citizen representatives, to outside agencies. One's the Sacramento Environmental Commission and the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District. Not so much concerned about the one that expires in December of '24, but we have the term for the Environmental Commission that ends June of 2024. When, I guess my question is more, when would we start the recruitment for that? And when do we expect that to come back to council for an appointment?
Well, I usually start advertising about a month, month and a half before the term expires. So when it does expire, if we have enough applications, it can go in July. It just depends on if there are actual applications out there.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Did I maybe misheard or something? But the Consumerless Groundwater Authority, that's not on the list? It should be, or am I incorrect?
That's through, isn't that?
But, yeah, me and Mr. Selling attend, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that that was a one-off as part of that action item. So I think it would be council's, you know, prerogative if they want to add it to the list, or what kind of a term they want it, if it's annually or more, or what. But that's my recollection, is when the CGA Consumerless Groundwater Authority item was approved, it included an appointment for the CGA board.
Yeah, so, you know, if I'm not re-elected, then it has to be appointed, so it should be on the list.
Okay, I can add it.
Okay. Because the CGA is not going away.
No.
So we're going to always need to fill that seat.
Absolutely.
I will add it.
Unfortunately, Sigma's not going away.
All right, so we're going to move to the next agenda item O, Comments By Staff.
Chief Kalanowski has comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council again. So we were successful in our delivery of toys in partnership with CSD Fire over the weekend, Sunday specifically. I think the count was 625 youth over 300 families. I think we have a few remaining bags that Colby's trying to get to the students. And so that was another successful event. And thank you for the city manager and the council member Lozano and his wife for being there to help us out. So that was a good day. Tomorrow, we are going to have our Home Alone from 4:00 to 6:30 at the PD. So you're never too old to participate. I feel like I could say that, sitting here. And also, I'll be there. But I also want to thank Councilmember Lozano, who knew we were searching for a Santa and got a Santa and Mrs. Claus that will be there tomorrow for the kids. So we look forward to a good event. I know we have a lot of the staff participating in that, as they do every year. So that should be a good time for everybody. Other than that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Public Works Director, Mike Selling.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation to the community as a whole. I mean, the reins are upon us now. And I can tell you, as a resident of Lodi, I look around and there are leaves everywhere in Lodi. But I look at Galt, and, you know, hats off. People have really done their, made their effort to keep that stuff out of the way. And so I think we're going to be in good shape this winter in addressing the storm drainage issues, so. And yeah, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, too, and look forward to seeing everyone in 2024. Thanks.
Mayor, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you, sir. Next agenda item is P Comment By City Council Member And Future Agenda Item, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I have quite a few. It's been a busy couple of weeks. First of all, I attended an organics recycling roundtable by Cal Cities. And I can't remember how many people were on it, but a ton. And it was good to hear that other cities are struggling much more with it than we are. And thanks to Cal Waste and our partnership and Councilmember Farmer for helping us all put together a good product, I think, for our residents. And so they still, Cal Waste is still struggling with the cost of taking recycled organics out of the area. But I think that in the future, having the transfer station and potentially a digester here, it might make things a little better, so. Tended the groundbreaking for the Aspirations Wellness Center on G Street. It's a place where clients will go to, for transitional living. And it's been that type of facility for a long time. It's just a new owner. Senior Bingo on the 11th. There are over 80 seniors participating. Thanks to Commission on Aging and Senior Resource Center for all their hard work to make that weekly event possible. And they're out pounding the pavement for bingo prizes. And our community has stepped up and are doing a really good job with that. Also, thanks Park and Rec staff for making the Chabola Center available and the work that is done there. We had the senior lunch in, and I'll let somebody else expand on that. But thanks to South County Services for their work. The community dinner last Saturday at Littleton Center. It was a great turnout. I don't know exactly how many attendees. I think we were down maybe from the last time it was done in 2019. But it was good to see a wide variety of people there. And I want to thank the, our own Youth Commission and the Culinary Academy at Astralita, the Boy Scouts and Galt 4-H Club for their work in making it successful. They did a lot of work, tons of person hours, man and woman hours, to make it all come together, so. And then Chief already mentioned the toy drive, I think, was really successful. There was a transition with people who were in charge of it, and I think it went really well. Like to thank Belinda for, from the Galt Arno Cemetery for being Mrs. Claus. She does it every year and is happy to do it. And so, and then lastly, last night, I attended a general membership meeting for the Galt Area Historical Society and had the honor of swearing a man, their 2024 board members. And it was followed by Potluck and Bingo. And of course, our very own Commission on Aging member, Bob Wilson, was the bingo caller. And so it was quite a packed house. And I thank Police Department for allowing them to use the community room. And it went very well, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Papino.
I don't have near that much. Now, I want to shout out once again to Belinda Ellis. Saturday morning, they did the Wreaths Across America. And it was a phenomenal event, as all of them that they put on there Memorial Day and in December. 350 wreaths laid, and hats off to her and her crew because, you know, we remember hearing about all of the storm problems they had. And, you know, the place looked phenomenal, given everything that they had to deal with over the year. So check out their website. And next year, we need to aim for 700 wreaths so we can hit every veteran grave over there. And Merry Christmas. We'll see you next year.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, just want to say thanks to South County Services for their meal, which most of us, I think everybody, maybe in this room, as far as staff and everything, participated in that, so. It was good. And then thank you to all of you for the lunch dinner/dinner that you guys all, I know you guys were there all serving. I was not. I popped in briefly to visit. But thank you for guys being, all being there for that and serving. Actually, staff, too. There was staff there, and Mr. Hines was there. And it was good. Looks like a huge turnout. The only, I just wanted to mention one more thing that I forgot to mention earlier, wasn't really official city business, but I was honored to help judge the Value Oak Spelling Bee. So I just wanted to go back to let you guys know that, yeah, we got to up our games because there's some smart kids. We had a third and fourth grader went the longest out of all the grades, 18 rounds, which is the longest ever. And I want to congratulate Nicole Magalone, a fourth grader, who won over her third grade peer. And if you want to win a spelling bee, the English language is not what it used to be, people, because you got to know how to spell bestie and you got to know how to spell hobbit, because those are two of the words. And hobbit cost one of the kids contests, so. Yeah, the language is evolving. So anyways, that's it. Just wish everybody a happy Christmas or Merry Christmas and safe New Years, and we'll see you all next year.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the Wreaths Across America was very well done. Having 700 veterans in the, it was a surprising number to hear. Galt certainly has, is well represented in supporting freedom, I guess. The community dinner, shout out to all the people that did a ton of work. I served there for five hours, and, you know, I really enjoyed myself. But it was nothing compared to all the work, the massive number of turkeys and pies and all the work that went into everything. Our Youth Commission did a great job in support. And also, our Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts that were there. All the way through, as soon as it was done, people really rallied to clean up in a hurry. It was really good to see. You know, I would ask my fellow council members for a little support in, look, driving, you know, driving to the council meetings the last couple of times, I noticed that our signage is, is really beautiful, that the blue signs, the Galt logo, I really like it. But then when it comes to public events, it's on Lincoln, the corner of Lincoln, and I can't think of what. But, and then right here in front, it's, it's just sticks and squares. And maybe during the C-seat project, that could be fixed. But I would ask my fellow council members for a little support in dressing up that signage to match our existing signage. I, I think it's, I think blight is a harsh term, but it certainly could do a better job matching. What do you think, gentlemen? The one out in front here, and then on Lincoln and by the pool, and I don't know if there's another. Those are the two that came to mind when I. Yeah, and they're, they're just like two by fours and four by fours, and there, there's no, like, this is, this is Galt community events or anything like that, so I don't think it's a big ask to help match the rest of the community. That's my basic ask, I guess. With that.
Is that it? Sorry, is that an agenda item request, or is that just something?
It's something that we could just put in the budget.
Okay. And they may, they may or may not need to come back for an agenda item, is what my point is.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and that's what you do best. So. No, no, I will not. And with that, Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a wonderful season.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Thank you for the staff. They're hardworking. Thank you for everybody coming to this council meeting. And I also attend a couple of events with other council members, with the staff. Attend the community dinner held by Galt Sunrise Rotary. Great turnout. Every year, thank you for all the voluntary. They really do great job, great job every year. And I also attend the senior lunch in held by South County Services with my other colleagues. It's always a pleasure to, able to attend and mingle with other citizens. Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year. Be safe during holidays. If anybody have no question, then I would like to adjourn that meeting 10:54. Thank you.